Calling to order the open session of the Monday, September 8th, King County Board of Education meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKenzie made the motion to approve. Mr. Queen seconded. Is there any discussion? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alrighty, moving on. I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session to conduct collective bargaining negotiations or consider matters that relate to the negotiations. The reason being public discussion of applicants and employee names and personal information could discourage people from working for the board and contain sensitive personal and biographical information. Personnel information is protected from disclosure under the MPIA. Also, discussion of negotiations with KCPS bargaining units to maintain the integrity of the collective bargaining process. No personnel?
No personnel.
Oh, I missed that. There it is at the top. Okay. To discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline demotion, compensation removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over this public, over whom this body has jurisdiction, any other personnel matters that affect one or more specific individuals. For those three reasons, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I motion to go into closed session.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Dorsey seconded. Mr. Queen had the motion. Is there any discussion? I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are going into closed session. We will resume the open session at 6:30.
Board of Education meeting. I want to report on closed session. We discussed personnel. No action was taken. The action will be taken in open session. In closed session was Mr. Hushin, our Director of Human Resources, our legal counsel, Adam Constance, four members of the board, Dr. McComas and her executive secretary, or I'm not sure what Ms. Manley's formal title is. Okay. Anyhow, Ms. Swanson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
All righty. First thing on our list is the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie has the motion. Is there a second?
Let me ask a question. Is this the part where it need to be amended based on the personnel discussion?
Nope.
All right. My second.
Okay. Mr. Queen has made the second. Any conversation? Any discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Pass unanimously, Ms. Manley. All righty. Ms. Manley, did anyone sign up for public participation?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For the consent agenda?
Yes.
All righty. Okay. Moving on. Dr. McComas, superintendent's report.
Yes, I'm just, I'm going to be very quick tonight so we can get to some other presentations. I'm delighted. We opened school. It's hard to believe we're starting the third week of school already for this school year and things are well underway. I will next month be bringing forward the number of meals that our team served over the summer. I just, I know Ms. Knowles in the back there. Our cafeteria team under Ms. Knowles' leadership expanded the number of meals that we served this past summer. It was really very impressive. So I have a little bit more involved report for that next month. And so with no further ado, what I'd like to do is invite our architects up to present the middle school design.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. McComas. Good evening, everybody. Just want to say thank you for having us here this evening. My name is Todd Bookmanic. I'm a senior project manager from Crabtree-Roball Associates. We are involved in the middle school project. With me as well, Dr. Lieber from Education Facilities Planning, as well as Dawn Sanders. She's a project manager at Maryland Stadium Authority. So once again for having us. Dr. McComas asked that we come this evening to give a short, brief presentation to give everybody a status update of the current project. We're super excited. It's been a very busy and productive last couple months. So we're starting to get into the nitty gritty, the fun stuff. Materials, colors. You know, the overall program of building is pretty much cohesive and has been worked through. We're very, very happy with it. It's very economical and efficiently laid out. So we're very pleased with that. So now, like I said, we're going to get into sort of the fun stuff. So we will have a brief project overview. Just, I know you guys have already seen this before, but we want to sort of just bring everyone's attention back to that. And then some design updates and, like I said, the front renderings and some of the imagery that we've that we've come up with, and then a brief schedule update. Once again, here we go. So, as we all know, it's a five through eight middle school project. We've got a 520 student design capacity with a state rated capacity of about 583. Some of the improvements that we're seeing at this proposed middle school are going to be fully separated bus, vehicular, access and parking. We've got some very clearly defined main entrance points, we certainly think that's going to be a great improvement. Maintaining that strong connection within that community and the neighborhood. Promoting SEPED safety and security. We don't have, this evening, I'll talk for hours about SEPED safety and security, but it's a very holistic approach to design. So the design promotes safety and security and visibility and strong surveillance. Clear separation between classroom areas and public spaces. So we've got a very nice clean delineation, I'll show you that in the plans, between private classroom and student autonomous areas versus public and community use areas. Implement on daylighting and use from every educational space. Maintaining sustainable design. So we're shooting for a minimum of silver lead certification through the project, and certainly if we can manage it, we're going to shoot for gold. So, the building will be highly sustainable and efficiently designed as well as operational. And our real end goal is to create that dynamic learning environment through the use of, as you see, colored materials, patterns, wayfinding, making this building exciting for students as well as educators. And then finally, durable, cost-effective materials that enhance the life cycle cost. We want to make sure that this is a legacy building, this building has to be around for a long time.
Question.
Yes, sir.
What determines the certification for the lead certification for silver or gold? What would be some of the things that are variables that would determine the level?
Absolutely. So we went through, we had a meeting last week. Water reduction, high efficiency mechanical and electrical, once again, daylighting use. We're using a geothermal energy system, HVAC system with wells, that's certainly a very, very highly efficient and cost-effective HVAC system. So, looking at that. Opportunities for students to ride bicycles, providing them opportunities for bicycles. We started to discuss maybe electrical vehicle charging stations, that's certainly not in, it's currently not in, but that's certainly on the table for discussion. So, these certification has a general list of items and opportunities, and we certainly want to maintain and make sure that our design is getting as many of those as we can and keeping it as economical for Ken County to discuss.
I was wondering if what would make the difference between silver and gold, what we can afford and what we can't?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah, absolutely. So what we see here is, it's actually a hybrid floor, our site plan, as you can see on the left-hand side, that's the current location of the middle school, on the far left, eastern portion of the property. The idea is to construct the new replacement middle school on the right hand, on the side of the property. Therefore, students can still occupy the building while that new facility is being constructed. And then once that is completed, and the existing building will be demolished and raised, and then that property, which is my property, will be repurposed for play fields. As you can see from the site plan, as I mentioned earlier, we've got a nice large parent drop-off visitor staff parking on that eastern side facing rolling road. We have a great opportunity for any of those cars to enter and queue along that entire eastern-facing driveway, dropping off children where that nice big red arrow is at that new intersection, and then exiting, and then buses coming off of East Campus Avenue, right-hand side, once again, queuing, and students would be entering into actually a secondary entrance to the south where it says roof overhead hang. So, that's certainly going to be very fortuitous during arrival and dismissals, a lot of students entering the building in the morning and egressing the building in the afternoon. So, rather than having a bottleneck where all those students are trying to get out of one main entrance exit point, we can actually utilize these two points, and you'll see it in the floor plan.
Would that also eliminate the currently parents who pull up right in, right there, you know, I'm looking at Mr. Buckle, the speed bump that goes, that'll go away, right? I mean, they'll, we won't hopefully have parents doing that anymore, and we won't have staff parking along the side with those on the angle? Okay.
Yeah, that's the idea. That's the idea. Yeah, make it very clean, make it very intelligent.
Well, that's also sort of considerate of the neighborhood, to be honest with you. It makes you a better neighbor.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Okay. And then, before I slip over to the floor plans, as you can see, we're retaining a lot of the other play activities as well, the courts, basketball courts to the northwest portion of the property, and then large green spaces for play activity. We've also incorporated, you'll see it in the plans as well, opportunities for outdoor learning. As you can see on the right-hand side, there's a nice opportunity that it's coming off of the educational classroom wings and fronting the media center, where we can have an opportunity for outdoor educational, where staff could bring out students in group settings and utilize, you know, on a beautiful daylight today, that could certainly be highly occupied and used. And then on the left-hand side, that's actually where the cafeteria space is, there's an opportunity for outdoor learning as well as outdoor eating. So those students could go outside and, and that could be upper classroom, that could be a special event, special treat, but it's a nice opportunity to utilize some of those site portions, because the building was designed for educational and outdoor use.
For educational purposes, will it be a multitude of classrooms that could be out at once, or will it be one at a time? Like, if full classes wanted to go out, would they be able to?
It's an operation with yes, it is sized for a full class. Because sometimes we'll see, let's say, the science and math, maybe there's a curriculum that they're doing together that has a little bit of overlap and overlay, sometimes we can bring those two classes out together, and they could do a dual-purpose learning event that kind of helps, where those two teachers kind of cross that learning opportunity. Maybe there's an English and humanities or an art opportunity to come out, but absolutely. But you can see, it's much larger than a classroom, so there is an opportunity for full classroom use. Then looking at the first floor plan, as I mentioned on the right-hand side are the classroom wings, the upper classroom, there are two-story classroom wings, on the first floor, the upper wing is the five, six wing, and the lower wing is the seven, eight wing, slightly larger, that student demographic has a slightly larger area for teaching. So, those wings are slightly larger. Now, those would be the four green boxes, those would be the four dedicated classrooms. Between each of those wings, there's a dedicated science and sport, that would be that light green space facing the courtyard. And adjacent to that is an orange area, it's an open collaborative learning area. So now you've also got flexible learning within the classroom as well. So within each one of those grade pods, grade wings, they each have an open dedicated flexible learning space, where you could either have student autonomous learning, you could have maybe small groups coming out, maybe there's extra testing that needs to happen, maybe once again, there's two curriculums that want to have an educational opportunity together. So, that could certainly be used for that use. Each one of them also has a dedicated sport group toilet, as you can see in the brown on the knuckle in the outside corners. And then the green spaces are special education. And you'll note that on the next plan, they have been strategically located for diverse opportunities and access from the different grade bands. The one at the bottom is actually life skills, they're the most sensitive demographics, we've located them on the first floor, sensory room and a toilet facility. And then the upper one is a behavioral support space, once again, kind of a sensitive demographic with an opportunity for a sensory room and support space off of that. To the left of that in the pink is the music curtain, and right across the hall is the cafeteria space, an auxiliary gym. The auxiliary gym is, has an operable wall, so that if there are additional students, let's say the population starts to grow, and they need a little bit of additional cafeteria, rather than increasing the number of signings, you can pull that wall open, spread out a little bit, everybody can, you know, middle school students, sensitive demographic, we want to make sure they got an ample space when you're gone to get to the cafeteria and our ledges. Then that could be closed after cafeteria use, and certainly used for physical education use. And then central is, the purple on the right is the nice large media center, located on the first floor, accessible from all the classroom wings, whether it's vertical circulation or horizontal. And then across the hall from that is technology. And we felt that that was advantageous to have technology and media center in close proximity to one another, because we're going to have a very fluid sort of curriculum. Within the media center, we've got a small television studio, as well as a small group instruction area, and then two small areas for the librarian, for the office and AV storage. And then as we move down the page, large gymnasium, as you can see it, we've got preacher seating in there, support that space, two locker rooms, a nice-sized stage. So the gymnasium is going to be the performance area. And during the design, we did go back and forth, is it a cafeteria, is it a gymnasium sport? The gym is the larger box, and it certainly supports the entire grade population. Could also be used for larger events, transitions from grade levels across the years, could be used for holiday events. So, early in the design discussion, we located the stage by the gymnasium to provide that support. And then finally, at the very front, those pink areas, that's all of your administration on the right. You can see the door entrance from the right-hand side and the lower side, with great surveillance, great control, nice eyes on the streets there for security and support. And then, this is the student sport guidance, as well as OTP in dark blue. And then finally, that's your community health at the very far end, which has great autonomy, it has nice clear identity, you'll see that in the renderings. It has access from the hallway for student sport, as well as from outside for community support.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
For the first floor, it says grades five through and seven. What made you pick those two grades instead of seven for April, fifth and six?
Because those, that's a very good question. The way the program was developed initially, for the study phase, this was years ago, the five and six grades are slightly smaller. So the science labs are about eight, nine hundred square feet, that demographic's younger, their science curriculum is not quite as mature. So those spaces are slightly smaller. So you can see that upper green box, it's about the size of a classroom space, whereas the seven and eight, seven will be the lower one, is a much larger science lab. That has a more robust science curriculum, going to be a larger space, leading room in those spaces. And in order to keep building as efficient as possible, we want to stack these spaces as cleanly as possible. And we will see, first and second floor, immaculate. And that's going to save money on structure, on masonry, on construction. That's a very highly efficient design, takes all the questions out of the contractor's mind, it keeps the steel very, very clean and simple, it makes it very simple for people to understand where they're going if they're traveling vertically. So if somebody's graduating from seventh to eighth grade, the classrooms are going to be essentially identical on the upper level, albeit there'll be a higher level grade. So, that's the reason. So you can see, the upper wing is slightly smaller, that's five, six. And then the lower wing is seven, eight.
For the gym, awesome. The new school, the gym is a bigger space than the gym we have currently?
Yes. It's a full-size court, as you can see, you've got the nice clean out-of-bounds, and we did work through, we were pushing and pulling and trying to tighten the belt and sharpen the pencil as much as we could through design, and that gave us the ability to add, and speaking of preacher seating, and I apologize, I don't have the number in front of me, it's five hundred and change on those seats, but you certainly have a really nice opportunity. There's a separating curtain that can come down in a gym class, that can separate that gym into two separate PE stations. You can see the side courts as well as the main courts. Volleyball is also going to be included with that, as well as some calisthenics and court club.
It's interesting, because when that building was built, that was a high school gym.
Mm-hmm. The reason change.
It changed.
It needs, yes, sir.
I was going to let them.
No, we were just talking about things.
The facility support space, where is that located again? I just want to say in contrast to administrative staff.
Yeah, they would be the pink spaces and the brown spaces. So as you can see, like, there's a lot of clusters of pink across the front, once again, that's your admin, your guidance, your nurse, a lot of those services are up front. It's really good to have eyes on that main street, but you don't want to cluster everybody. We want to make sure that middle school and high schools, you want to have some eyes on the street throughout the school, protect it throughout the school. So as you can see, we've got some offices at the center hub, we've got some offices above tech, below the auxiliary gym, we've got a faculty dining up there next to music and cafeteria, and then each individual classroom wing has its own faculty instructional planning center and faculty support space, that's that small pink box in each one of these classroom wings. So the staff within that floor have a very nice room where they can get together, so they can come together and do some planning, they need to go in and do some work, they need to do some copying, do some sorting, they don't have, that does not have to occur in a classroom space, they've got a nice dedicated space that, a workroom space they can use, each floor.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. It looks like it, but do all the classrooms have windows?
Yes.
Wow, that's great.
Yeah, that's great. Absolutely, one hundred percent.
Absolutely, like, awesome.
That's small thing, yes.
Yeah, that's a goal that we really strive for, and that sometimes can be a challenge, because sometimes there's constrictions, and this is a very fluid process, as we can attest, like, this was not, we didn't come to the table with this design. In fact, it was an L-shaped design, I believe, and it was brought up that maybe we should think outside the box a little bit and think of some other options, and it's worked out to be this two-story design. And you can see the strong yellow main street that riproulates that private classroom space to the right, and those larger public spaces on the left. So, these could be shut down, there's closure doors at the ends of the hallways that you see, so in the evening hours, that can be closed down, so patrons and community members can come in, use the gym, use those spaces, but they can't sneak back and wander back through. And also, God forbid, if there's ever an issue, it helps with lockdown. As I mentioned with SEPED, we've got four to five layers of control, the front entrance is fully locked, patron is met, similar to what you have now with an Aphone, that patron then could be allowed into that vestibule, that vestibule is fully secure, that patron can go nowhere other than looking at the receptionist, yield their license, get vetted in, then that person can be buzzed into the reception. The reception area is also fully secure, there's, the only way out is back out the door. So if some event were to happen, once again, that person doesn't have free run through the school. God forbid they do. We've also got these closure doors at every classroom wing that would close, they're fire-rated doors, so they're tough to get through. And then each one of the classroom doors then, of course, has locks on it. So you've got four to five layers of delay, of control, and of separation between the front entrance and the students.
I assume no bells and whistles come with cameras and stuff, or at least?
Well, cameras certainly, yeah. Cameras are very important, very important, I'm going to say overlay, but we design, as I mentioned with SEPED, crime prevention through environmental design, we try to design the school that helps. I don't need as many cameras. Cameras are probably the most obsolescent and expensive system within the school.
Right.
And they're certainly needed, I'm not saying they're not required, and we will have them. But we want to make sure that we maximize as much natural surveillance as possible. So when I'm sitting at the reception desk, if I'm a receptionist or an administrative assistant or the attendee, there's clear the way is designed, I can see out the back glass, I can see out that glass, we've got principal and assistant principal offices strategically located on corners, so people have vision on the street, they can see somebody coming from those bus parking lot or main parking lot fifty feet away before they're up. So that's an important thing. Same thing with the SRO, we've got an SRO located strategically within that corner, so that person has eyes on the main street as well as the two entrance points. They're very identifiable, we usually see that being as a very strong deterrent. Great, great question. Second floor, as I mentioned, it's a very nice clean stack, as you can see, it's grades six through eight, and classrooms basically stack. You can see we've, once again, dispersed those dark green special education classrooms very cleanly, you've got a general special ed to the north, and a general special ed to the bottom left, that was the second behavioral support space, that thinner green space, once again, with its own sensory cool down room. And then those pink boxes, you can see there's some special education curriculum, and there's also some general office space. You can see the two above art, art stacks on top of tech, that was extremely fortuitous, it was the same size in the program, so we felt that we could create an anchor on that side. And then you can see the two, there's an IT room and office and a smaller workspace in pink there. And I can't wait to show you the renderings, because when we went through the design, one of the biggest critic critiques was, that's such a deadly hallway, Todd. Like, it's a single-loaded hallway, all you have on the, the single-loaded being, like, usually the most efficient hallway is a double-loaded hallway, it has everything on each side. So it's a circulation path, fully loaded, right? That's the most efficient way to do it. This one, you can see, there's a, you know, a big gym space below, there's a media center, there's cafeteria space, so, you know, and I have a little smart classroom up there on that hallway, connecting the two of those together. And there was concern, you know, and I can't wait to show you the renderings. It's extremely interactive, we had opportunities for some connections, some vertical connection downstairs, it's an extremely lively space upstairs, there's an opportunity for, there's two CLAs, as you can see in the orange, but there's that third in that yellow, that display, that also creates a nice little breakout space, once again, for students, you have your upper grade levels up there, this is, it's a very cool opportunity for students, once again, I mean, they're learning a very different sort of criteria than we did when I was, when we were young, I'll say we were all in that same boat, mostly. But you guys are learning at a much different way, so it's, there's a lot of interaction, which I think is really cool. You know, I'll talk, I don't want to go long.
No, you can tell.
As the architect, like, I love my profession because, like, if somebody's really good at math, you can be an architect. If somebody's really good at drawing and design, you can be an architect. If somebody's really good at time management and people, you could be an architect. If you're really good at structures and, you know, thinking in the box, you could still be an architect. So that's the way students are learning. Like, every student doesn't fall into the same hole. You know, there's square holes and round holes, and when you've got more opportunities for autonomous learning, it's supportive. Because now they can learn interactively. And the strong suits, I may be very strong at management and people skills, and I went to a design school. But maybe I'm not as good as an engineering part. But my friend over here is extremely good at engineering, but he can't draw anything but a square. So, you know, he's going to be, like, we get together, and his strong suits and my strong suits will help both of us excel. That's what we're trying to provide within this building, that flexible learning.
So you would say this building is equipped for the 21st century and not 1940?
Absolutely. Yes, yes. All right. So I'm just going to show some quick shots. Once again, this is that main stair. It's a nice opportunity for an open stair. This is the, the main entrance is to your right. That bus entrance is below me. The SRO is right, pretty much where it says CR. As you can see, there's going to be some text that says wayfinding. But we're certainly not going to put a sign that says wayfinding. But we haven't had an opportunity to really sit down. This is the, this is the next step. We're going to be looking at opportunities for some graphics. You know, we started talking about that actually a week or two ago. We said, "Well, is it as simple as five, six, seven, eight?" I know it's eight because it has an eight on it. Well, that's good for elementary, but when we get to the upper levels, you want it a little more sophisticated. So we started talking about bringing in opportunities for graphics and imagery from the community. I mean, you guys are very fortunate. You've got the water. It's rural, but you have a nice downtown. You know, there's a lot of history. So we're going to, that's the next steps within this project, is to bring some of that in. So that these students now go to their classroom wing that has a tieback to the community.
I like it.
Absolutely, sir. So if you see some of that, that's what that's all about. That is, this is, these are hot off the presses. These are still going to be, we have a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, virtual meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM. So we're going to start delving deeper into this tomorrow and then really helping develop these. But that's what's going on. But you'll see some of the wayfinding opportunities and color. And it's a very inexpensive and efficient way to go because all you're doing is changing colors. It's the same material, it's the same hard core, carpet, same paint. Opportunities for a bulkhead and a ceiling to really designate a node or a milestone or a terminus point within the hallway space. Once again, this is by the media center. That's the main street hall going down. As you can see, there's a nice opportunity for some wayfinding and designation of terminus. That bulkhead coming out actually slides the whole way into the media center, which you'll see in a few minutes. So it's very, very connected to the in and the out. As you saw with the floor plan, it was an orthogonal ninety-degree plan at the bottom, and it had a splay. And that strong splay created that, which while on the site, it's a very strong design intent. We're bringing that inside the building and out. So we're connecting the outside design to the inside design. And then you can see, even on that first floor, there's still opportunities for some small autonomous learning, loose seating, very inexpensive. But the way it's designed, you can still have opportunities there for students to kind of autonomously learn and flexible learning. This is looking back in the other direction towards the front door. Once again, that's that wayfinding element with the dark blue bulkhead above as well as the flooring. Another spot, kind of looking down towards, if you were heading in, oh, this is the video. So this is walking down. I entered the building, and now I'm coming across, you can see some fixed seating to the left there. I'm approaching that grand stair. There's my SRO. You know, loud and proud, right in the front. And then I keep seating down. There's a nice opportunity under this open grand stair for students to gather. Classroom wing, seventh grade would be right there where it says wayfinding to your right. Now I'm approaching those nodes where that large group toilet is. Gym will be on my left-hand side, and that would be looking down that first-grade classroom. Obviously, a first-grade level classroom, which would be seven, those doors. As you can see, on either side of that, young lady are held in the open position. Once again, if there's an evening event or an emergency, those doors will close, and that would be non-accessible. Shot inside the media center. This is certainly going to get developed. That blank wall, it's going to be fully developed. But you can see how that, that big bulkhead slid in and came up. You can see there's really nice vision from that second floor meeting space as well as the first floor looking out. Very nice, open, high-volume, vibrant, lots of light, lots of day lighting, lots of opportunities for student learning. Certainly not your old, you know, just stack the books. So there's, it's a very nice opportunities within the space. There's another shot looking back the other way through that nice large window out to that courtyard space. You can see the door. Great, brings in that natural daylighting on the east side. Has an accessible exit right there to that courtyard. So there's a teaching space in the background there. You see those children in the teacher to the left with the boards. That would be the classroom space within the media center. And then there's, you can see the librarian right there stationed at the desk. And then, once again, there's opportunities for loose seating and some reading in the media center. Another video. This is the one upstairs. So that would be that grand stair. Looking down. That's the elevator. And now you're going through that other set of doors and walking down towards art. That'd be the gymnasium on my left-hand side. Fortunately, he didn't look that way, but maybe he will. Yep. Thought about it. It's a really nice opportunity to look down into the gym.
It's just so far and from what is there now. It's just so, it's like, I feel like I'm watching a sci-fi movie or something.
It'd be cool. That's a collaborative learning space right there. I apologize. We were in the classroom wing. As you can see, those collaborative learning areas also have, once again, a bulkhead, a terminus point, the skinnin', the materials, really highlighting that open area for flexible learning in each one of those classroom wings.
I like that within the school system.
Yeah, it's very, it's very cool. Another quick shot of the CLA, we call them, collaborative learning areas. You can see there's some mobile equipment in there. There's teaching space within there. Ample room for flexible learning within that space. Another one. This would be the shot from, this is the one I was looking for. This is the upper one. You can still see we've got this, we have a similar hard seating in there as well for students. You can see the group toilet on the left, the water coolers, clearly designated with that green sort of that portal. So everybody knows, like, okay, that's where I got to, if I have to use the facility, that's my support space for students. And this is walking, this is the one I was looking for. So this is walking down that second street hallway. That's the media center on the left. Very cool opportunity for some learning and some fill-out space there off that main street hall. From that angle, our sort of pull-in, and then looking back. We've got a very similar look down into the gymnasium space where that young lady is, I guess, there, as you can see.
Is he going to look? Is he going to look?
He's going to look. Oh, I didn't want to look. Maybe I'll fix that for Thursday. I'll have a little quick right-hand look down into the gym. Yeah. That's, once again, I, that's, that is, that would be as per the plan. So that is looking, like, all the way down towards sixth grade. I'm at the seventh, eighth grade classroom wing. That's the gym on the left. I think that's an extremely cool hallway. A lot going on on that. And once again, we were really ridiculed, but questioned, like, boys, that could be a, that's an inefficient, very boring hallway, Todd. So, and that wasn't from you guys. I'm just, you know, but there were some other, there were some other reviewers that were questioning the validity of that hall. And I am super excited how that hallway turned out.
Question about the bathrooms, more or less, in the new middle school than the old?
I'd have to check, but I believe there's six fixtures per, times two, times four. So that'd be twenty-four, plus there's single-use toilets as well. And each one has a janitor, a custodial closet as well. So each classroom wing has its own dedicated custodial closet, group toilet, as well as a single-use toilet.
I've got a question. I don't know if this is the time to ask it because I don't know how foreign the presentation. You are, but I know that we had to dial back. I mean, we had to lessen the square footage. So I'm kind of wondering what was left on the cutting room floor? What is not in there that we initially hoped for?
Sure. We had two music rooms at the time. We're now down to one, so that's a dual-purpose music room. I mean, the good news is you have a nice ice stage. So we'll review that tomorrow as well. We redesigned that a little bit to make it a little cleaner, which is good. So if there were to be two needs for music curriculum, they could use the stage if it had to be separated, and they couldn't do that with scheduling. And then the other one was, originally, we were looking at five classrooms per grade, and we reduced that to four with the CLA. There was, for a while, the CLAs were out, then the CLAs came back in. The opportunity there is, let's just say fifteen, twenty years down the line, we do have a population increase, and you didn't want to add to the ends of the building. You could just close in those CLAs. You still have some opportunities in the building for open collaborative learning, as I've showed you. But that would be a very quick and inexpensive way to get an additional classroom per grade, basically, four.
The reason I was asking is because, looking at this and knowing what our current situation is, it's hard to believe that there was anything that was taken out. I mean, it's pretty amazing, all the...
I'm, like, getting emotional. This is so, so awful.
You want to go back to middle school?
Yeah, I do. These kids are going to be spoiled by the fact that they're...
I think it's very cool. A little still shot of that area looking into the media center. Another shot of that space. That's a very cool spot. That's that hallway looking down. So we've got some activity with the art room and sports spaces as well as the media and the gym. And then this is the outside shot. This is what the building, I know sometimes it's really hard to see what it looks like in plan and envision that in three dimensions and volumetric. You can see that really nice plaza. It embraces both streets up the corner, which is nice. It embraces the left as well as the main parking lot on the right. Very clean and dedicated area for your flagpole. We've got opportunities for bike racks across the plaza area. We'll start to develop this a bit, you know, other opportunities for some planning ads, maybe somewhere defined for you. At this point, it's essentially just much in landscaping. But you can see the very cleanly laminated classrooms. We strategically use some color at the roof, accenting the end stairs, the media center, certainly that administrative box. And then community health at the far end, at the bookend, that far into the...
One thing I didn't see, which I'm pretty sure is in there, there's an elevator somewhere, didn't there?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Right at the, right at that main, it's very adjacent, that's a good question. It's very adjacent to that large main open stair. So that's going to be your nice opportunity for that vertical. It's in the community space, public space, so once again, people can access the upper level if need be for toilet use or any opportunity that would arise, but they wouldn't have to go into a classroom, dedicated classroom space. So it's a little more controllable.
I'm not sure if there's something that the school and administration would handle or the architect firm. Something like a fire drill or some type of event happen where they have to quickly exit. Is it a way your company kind of streamlines to make that effective, to get off the building in the quickest time possible, if that makes sense?
It does, yeah. As you can see, those blue boxes on the right are stairtowers verticals. So if I'm on the second floor, I can remember those directly down and outside. It would be up to you guys, you know, kind of clues on how they were on the queue then, some queue in parking lots, some queue in grass areas. But there's vertical circulation there on either end, so students have access. And I'm thinking second floor. First floor is very, very quick and easy. Second floor, you know, I want to make sure they've got clean intuitive e-rests. First floor stairs to an each end, and then multiple ancillary e-rest points at the cafeteria space, at the gymnasium space, at the back support spaces in the back of house where we got the mechanical room and sort of the service area, kitchen area at the back. There's also two ways out, as well as that main corridor that goes past community health.
Just a quick question. How does it work in terms of sensors? Like, say, you know, someone wanted to open a building, like, how would those in charge know if a door that wasn't necessarily authorized to be opened?
Well, that's a great question. Yeah, well, we are, we are, we had a meeting already. We're going to have a follow-up meeting to that. There are, for e-rests, there would be card readers, similar to what you guys have now. So, and they can be easily programmed. So, you know, if staff are entering in the morning, you know, those can be programmed. Doors can be operated and open, so students can come in at a certain time of day. Those doors can lock, so that secures the building. We use what's called a door position sensor. There's some other terms for it, but that's the one I always use, a DPS. And that's essentially a sensor that's built into the frame of the door. So if somebody chocks the door open or somebody has a door that's open that shouldn't be open, it sends a message to usually the front office, but that can be also to maintenance as well. And it alerts them that that door is ajar. Yeah. And the nice thing with the card readers is you know who's entering and exiting that building at any time, whether it's weekends, in the evenings, and that can be programmed and controlled. So, you know, if teachers aren't coming in on the weekends, then that card reader's not going to work. If administration's coming in, their card readers are going to work. Administrative may have access to their admin suite, but staff doesn't, that sort of stuff. So that's all programmable. But, yeah, great question. Couple shots around the building, and then we're going to be done in a few minutes. But you can see, we're trying to, and once again, we're working on the graphic on the logo. That's still being discussed, you know, retaining the original logo, getting some signage on that. As you can see, we're looking at a brick that's similar to the brick that was there. Now, we want to, we don't want to be foreign, but we don't want to mimic. So that's the balance with this project, like, how do we make this building have its own special identity yet not look like it doesn't belong there? So we're trying to bring some of that community, keep the scale down, make it inviting, as I mentioned. And then a shot around the seven, eight classroom wing is in the background. Five, six behind me, that's the nice media center with that large glazing. That's that learning area. Once again, we're just starting to develop that. I see that as having tables and umbrellas, opportunities for students to come out with mobile marker boards with teachers. But as you can see, it's starting to get developed.
Would this section be facing the parking lot or the back end of the school?
This would be facing the parking lot. Yeah, the main parking lot. So the gymnasium space and cafeteria space face the fields, face the internal, so they have direct access, whether that's during PE or during lunchtimes, if they want to use the fields for lunch activity.
Question about the construction. Our school system has a lot of issues with the roof. Being just damaged. What type of material, what type of, I don't know, vision will keep us from looking up in four or five years and doing major?
Yeah, no, you shouldn't. No, we're going to use, it's a thermoplastic, thermopolyethylene TPO. It's a membrane roof. It's a white membrane roof, which definitely has the reflectivity for lead. It is thirty-year warranty, so usually a sixty mil. And sometimes we'll put an alternate bid to do an eighty mil, which is slightly thicker membrane. Costs a little more. We'll see if we can fit that into the budget. So we'll put that in as an opportunity for contractors to give you the premium for the eighty mil. But it's a thirty mil membrane roof. So certainly better than the way they did it back then, with those old built-up roofs. They were made to be flat. They were made to pound. That old asphaltic stuff would heat up in the summer months, reflow, and then it would cool down in the winter and crack. And it was a good idea at the time, but they've sort of figured it out. Yep. I took a couple evening dusk shots. This is a little severe. Maybe I'll lighten it up a little bit. This would be eleven PM. I want maybe like eight PM. But as you can see, the building is going to be a nice beacon, you know, once, if the lights are on or the building is, especially for after-hours use, it's a really nice opportunity. That's the media center space.
Yeah, I do have a question about the, I just know from sitting in county planning commission meetings when somebody's building, bringing new construction. When school isn't in session and there's no community activity going on, how much light will? I'm thinking, let's say I'm a neighbor.
Right.
I'm just wondering how much disruption to the neighborhood at night in terms of light?
Agreed. Yeah, and that can be, that's a Kent County Public Schools decision, but...
Yeah, and I'm assuming also that might, I mean, we're going to, I'm assuming, Dr. Lever, we're going to have to go through the regular, we're going to have to get a permitting and everything from the town of Chestertown, right?
Oh, really? Yeah.
Okay.
Usually, it's a handful of lights at sensitive areas, the media center, I'd imagine.
No, I got, the reason I'm saying is when I, every time I go down Route 213 and I look over at the Dixon complex, every single time at night, I just say, "What an amazing-looking campus that is," and I want that for our middle school too.
Yeah. I agree.
Agreed.
So just a quick, you know, just a quick schedule update. You know, we're looking at construction early next year in February. We're trying to button up the drawings here. I'm sorry?
No, I said something out loud. My bad. I said fingers crossed.
Fingers crossed, fingers crossed. I agree. We're looking at finalizing that building in the summer of '27 to make sure we got an opportunity to move in in August. Once teachers and students are in, we're going to... Once teachers and students are in, we're going to pull down the existing building. That's going to take a little while, but you know, you can see a couple months and then we're going to regrade and re-balance that area where the school is currently for those playfields. So, and that'll be completed by spring of twenty-eight. So that's the, that's the anticipated schedule as we set.
Two years from now, if we're able to follow the script, we'll be in a new middle school.
Yeah.
So one of your little brothers.
Yeah.
Get there, right?
Jasper, yeah. Oh, that's crazy.
Except the littlest mother.
Let me ask this about your firm and building new schools. And this might not even apply. Has there been typical growth? One of the things we're discussing now with getting a new middle school here locally is, well, new middle school brings growth and increases student enrollment. Have your firm, from any of the recent schools, seen growth?
It can, yeah, absolutely it can, sure. Yeah, it's, it's a nice advantage. I mean, I think when, when community members and neighbors and communities see that school, absolutely, that's a draw. So that can potentially happen because.
Me, I only got one more question. Because I don't know if the money locked in as a set price and nothing changes, but do you foresee any increases in maybe material need where it might raise the price of what the middle school is or any foresee any decreases that save any money for it?
I mean, we've built, we have three estimates, right? So, so we have an estimator. There's an estimator on the team, but well, the contractor, you know, the construction manager. And then MSA has an independent estimator as well. Certainly, we are in times where things are, I don't want to use the word volatile. I don't think it's volatile.
They're fluid.
It's fluid, that's a great word. It's a little fluid. I mean, we're seeing some things go down, we're seeing some things creep up. I think everybody had a knee-jerk reaction originally. I think that's settling down a little bit.
Yeah.
So, but we certainly have escalation built into the estimates when we come out with these. And, you know, we hope for the best. Once again, this side of the table, we try to design that building as cleanly and as efficiently as possible. That's our biggest goal.
Yeah.
And I think it's a very cool building, personally. I think it's very cool. But if you boil it down, it stacks very nicely. Like the steel just sits on top of the steel, the classrooms sit on top of the classroom, the stairs, the toilets, the large boxes are on the left, they're very clean, the classroom areas are on the right, they're very clean. We're trying to minimize like random window fenestration sizes. We want to try to keep those at least solidified, maybe two, three different sizes. And what that does is it takes the guesswork out of the contractor.
Yeah.
You know, when they're pricing it, when they're constructing it, things go quicker. They're trying to get, you know, steel guys out there, masons out there, concrete guys out there. It's easier to schedule that because there are not going to be as many ups and redos and things like that because it was a fussy set of drawings. So that's what we try to do to keep the price down on our end. And then using very durable, handsome masonry. It's masonry. We're going to source that masonry from Maryland, maybe Southern PA, so it's going to be close. You know, we're not getting it from Utah. I didn't give you a purple brick that they're going to ship across the country. We used to do that back in the early two thousands. I remember those days when, you know, cost of construction was low and cost of fuel was low and we'd pick a really cool purple brick and they don't have purple clay out here. They got it out in Utah. And back in the day, we'd bring that in, not anymore. So we try to keep things very, very cost-effective. Once again, you know, flooring material, very consistent. And then we have a little fun with color and patterning. You know, that's where we have a little fun.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is more of just a curiosity, but I've never heard of this like open classroom in the middle of the hallway sort of deal. Have you seen that in other school systems and has it been?
Hundred percent, yeah. It's very, it's, and it's interesting because there's some, there's some staff and teachers that, that it's, it's foreign and it takes a little, it takes a little nudge once in a while from the upper admin. But I think once they realize, I mean, there's some children, you come in, they, like, all lights are on, shades are down, look forward twenty-five in a row, and let's learn our lesson. And then there's other ones that are a little more group settings, they're a little more within the classroom space, they, and fight that natural daylighting reduces the amount of fluorescent light, well, LED lighting at these points, showing my age. But, you know, so yes, we've seen this, and as I said, I, I think once the, once the staff embraces the way you guys are now learning, they become very effective. And I forget if we have another COVID outbreak, but you know, there was, it was back in the time when we were begging for outdoor spaces and places to spread kids out a little bit and get additional teaching spaces. So they also are very positive for that. Yeah.
I've got a question. This might be more for Dr. McComas. So this is the first time that we have a board have seen this, and I know there's going to be a presentation again on Thursday night. Is there any way that slides or anything could be put on the website? I mean, what if somebody can't get there Thursday night and not able to hear the presentation, at least to get an eyeball of, hey, this is what we're looking, is that inappropriate to ask that question?
No, I don't think it's inappropriate. In fact, Ms. McKenzie had also said, can we get a copy of the slides? And so I figured we would work together and I can get that.
Okay.
And I would encourage anyone, you know, the, the community's always welcome to look, watch our streaming of this presentation. And of course, Thursday's community meeting will just be live, we won't have that streamed. And then we were able to confirm that we're scheduled to go to our Board of Commissioners on the sixteenth, which is next week.
And that's a six, that's a six PM, by the way, that's a six PM meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, so I have some homework. I wrote some notes. I'm going to, I'm going to tweak the slides a little bit, the night slides, I'm going to brighten them up a little bit. I'm going to have him take a peek down into the gym space. I think that would be critical.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, yeah, so there's, there's a couple little spots that I'll improve upon. I know our interior design professional, Nicole, she was, she was really chomping at the bit to get the media center a little more developed with some color, so we're going to try to get that stuff done tomorrow. So I sent an email when I got here this evening that we need to have that done by Wednesday. So I'll try to get it done for noon and then I'll be used for the community meeting as well as the Board of Commissioners meeting. So that's my goal.
I do have a question just about the interior. With the interior design, I'm, and to me, there's things that are clearly a part of the building, but then there's other things like seating, which are separate from the building itself. Just for the average person to be able to understand, I'm assuming the seating does not come with the building, but that would be a separate.
Oh, that's a very good question.
This is just for design purposes, right?
Absolutely, yes. So the way Nicole would say that, because that's mostly interiors, wheelhouse, is if you could take the building and turn it upside down and give it a shake, anything that would fall out, it would be called NIC, non-contract, that would be purchased and procured. It's part of the overall construction costs, soft costs, but Kent County would purchase that equipment directly. So we're certainly showing some examples. That may not be what you guys select at the end. But anything that's fixed, anything part of the construction, absolutely, that's part of the overall construction cost. Very good question.
I just want to say it's really nice to see, like, the, the next step because we were in our whole feasibility, all, all we've really been through is the feasibility study, which was gnashing of teeth of deciding where it was going to be and what the grade configuration was going to be. And so now it's, it's much more of a real thing. So I feel like I'm walking down an airport. When I was looking down there, I said, I feel like I'm walking through an airport and, you know, all these kiosks. It doesn't even, I don't mean this as a criticism, it hardly seems like it's a school.
Yeah.
Twenty-first century school.
Well, we tried, like I said, wayfinding is critical for students to find their way. So we certainly try to make that as easy as possible. Once again, include that as a holistic design element. As I stated, the outside and the inside are certainly brought together. It's fun. This is the fun part.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll keep moving on here under superintendent's report. Was that?
Yeah.
Okay. That's okay. So moving on to our next item on the agenda, our last meeting, the board directed me to draft a letter inviting Governor, the Governor, to visit our current Kent County Middle School to, as another next step in terms of advocating for any additional state funding. I've submit a draft letter and I'm seeking any feedback and/or approval for the letter.
I thought the letter was well-written. I mean, I certainly appreciate it. I mean, I, my hope would be that even if the Governor himself doesn't come, that he would send some type of representative. I think it's, you know, we're doing our best that we can, and this is the kind of stuff that we need to keep doing to reach out to communicate that there is a legitimate need here. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's given actual numbers to speak to what our situation is. So I agree with Laura.
The number that I specified in there for additional requests would have been the complete amount had our legislation that we brought forward last year been passed.
Yes.
So, you know, our legislation didn't pass. They issued a pre-authorization of an additional eight million. That number identified in the letter is what would have been the difference between the eight million and what had our legislation pass, if that's making sense. And that would bring the state share up to somewhere in the, the.
Sixty-four.
No, we're currently at sixty, sixty-three or sixty-seven on the state right now. If we were to get this additional amount, that would push us up into the eighties, the state share being in the eighties.
So. That wasn't what you were asking. You wanted a dollar amount from them, but they kept saying eighty, twenty.
Right.
So this is.
Converted to a dollar amount.
Yeah.
So.
Let me ask this, so this letter will get sent to where exactly?
To the Governor's office.
Any, anywhere else? Maybe what? I'm just throwing things out. Controller office or anything of that nature?
Wherever the board would direct me to send it. But the, the last meeting, we said the Governor and Delegate Barnes. We have in, in the past invited Delegate Barnes multiple times, so.
I'm cool with it.
So you're, you need, we need to approve that. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the letter to, to send to Dr., excuse me, I've got Dr. McComas on the brain, Governor Moore.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
One question. Is this something we can post on our website saying, hey, we're still trying every means, looking under every rock?
Sure.
That's all.
All righty, so we've had a, I forget already, who made the motion?
Laura made the motion, I second.
Ms. McKenzie made the motion, Mr. Queen made the second. Alden, anything you'd like to add?
She should be voting, her name.
Well, she's, your name will go on this, so I didn't know if there was anything you wanted to say.
No, I like it. I think, I still think we could do some other things. I don't think we should.
Agree.
Our voices, the board should end here, but I don't think you guys think that either. So I like it. I think we should go ahead.
But I do agree with your point, Ald.
Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
Aye.
All righty, that's unanimous. Motion passes. All righty, Dr. McComas, we're still with you in the public relations plan.
Yes, so I'm bringing forward a public relations plan for information item primarily. It's an operational plan on how to continue to build awareness in the wider Kent County community about the good things that are indeed happening in Kent County, public schools at large. Within this multi-year public relations plan, it will be an iterative process. So you'll see in the plan that I have a more detailed set of directions for this next twelve-month cycle, but each year we will revisit to see where we are and what is emerging within the community in terms of need to clarify. You'll see there's three campaigns within the plan for the first year. The first campaign is actually well underway. It's about Kent County Middle School and ensuring that all members of the wider Kent County community, as well as our parents, are aware of where we are with the design process and the schedule for moving forward with ultimately building a brand-new middle school for Kent County. To that end, we have developed a series of one-pagers for information to clarify people's understanding of what's involved with funding our middle school. In addition, I've been out, every community organization that invites me, I eagerly run to and present and clarify information. I was at the soccer kickoff this Saturday, walking, stalking parents along the sidelines, handing out flyers and answering questions in the community. And I'll be at the farmer's market the next two Saturdays to answer any community members' questions about our middle school project. And I've been on local news sources that have made it clear that they're open for us to come on and communicate. I'll, I've been on our own radio station broadcasting about it and I'll schedule to go in the other local radio station, I think next week, the end of next week sometime. So I'll continue to make sure that everyone in Kent County, to my greatest extent possible, is aware of where we are with this project. Following that, really getting into helping the community understand the value proposition that we bring to parents. For example, our senior class that just graduated in June, we saved parents three-point-two million dollars in just that single class alone, and that was only one-hundred-and-twenty-three students. And that number comes from a combination of the advanced placement courses that they took and, and achieved three, fours, or fives, one that could be converted to college credit by universities. That also includes the dual enrollment credits that they earned while they were in high school. It includes the industry-recognized credential exams that we covered for students to graduate with a professional credential, ready to enter the local economy the day after graduation. And it includes the millions of scholarship dollars that they were directly awarded moving into college. So that all total is three-point-two million dollars for just that graduating senior class. So I'm committed to making sure that our community understands the value of a Kent County public school education. And when our students are graduating, it's not just with a diploma, they have a gift with purchase and we can put a dollar, dollar amount on that. So that next campaign will really be about helping the community understand the value of Kent County public schools and what that means for the bottom line of, of the community. And then the third campaign will be really around helping everyone to understand the programming that we have. I often will be in the community and people will say, well, you know, we need to bring back, you know, construction. And I say, we have construction. We need to have automotive. We have automotive. So there is a lot of lack of awareness of what we actually are offering and where kids are going with those programs. So awareness campaign around that and then also lifting up the unique learning opportunities we have related to the arts programs here in Kent County. So we will revisit and map out a cycle of communication year upon year. I just think it would be foolish for me to say, you know, thirty-six months from now, I need to be communicating on this because we want to see how this moves forward. Because to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had a public relations plan.
I've never seen one in this county.
So we'll continue, it will evolve. It is a working plan and it will evolve as time goes on and new opportunities emerge. And I'm always open to ideas. So please send ideas if you have good ones and we will work to incorporate them. So that's, that really concludes the public relations. concludes the public relations plan. And I want to thank the board for the opportunity to share that and to work on that because I think it's worthy work for our community to be reconnected and aware of how much we offer. Yeah.
I have a few questions, please.
Yes.
For the situation analysis, you mentioned, let me, like some of the groups that you want to reach out to or present to or communicate with, they're all kind of local, which of course, we got to do local. But have you thought about maybe putting our school system out to neighboring counties in a way that's not disrespectful to other school districts, but still kind of advertise who we are and what we have, like maybe Cecil County, Delaware, Queen Anne's County, because we are losing students to those surrounding areas. So maybe get something in their press or in their news outlets to kind of re-attract people to come back to this county.
Mm-hmm. I, I hear your, your suggestion and I'm writing down notes on thinking about how, how do we ensure that clientele even outside Kent County are aware of what we have to offer? Because we will have a brand-new middle school.
Yes, ma'am.
That they can move into Kent County to use.
Question. This is more so for the public consumption question. When you say stakeholders, people think when that term is used by us, that it doesn't mean the general community and you're only talking about maybe just examples, Dixon Vow, the hospital. What is your definition of stakeholders when you say this?
Every citizen who lives in Kent County, every business organization that functions within Kent County, every public government agency that functions within Kent County.
Thank you for the clarity. One last question. For some of the groups, this is me putting on my community hat at times. I see some of the same groups that people kind of do, the Rotary Club, whatever the ones mentioned, because I don't want to just read the names. Have you thought about doing things like maybe to sort of how you do community conversations and presentations to maybe the food pantry? We're giving them food during the summer, maybe work with the food pantry to talk to some of the disenfranchised or economically challenged students or families in our community. Kent County Public Library, we having issues with where we want to be with English literacy. Maybe partner and reach out with them just to give the face of our school system, meaning you, more avenues of people to talk to. I know we discussed when we were talking about some of the, I don't, I don't know what it's called, but using info or collecting data at games. You went to the soccer game, but it's a lot of other games that you might can find, you know, opportunity to kind of put the word out for us as well. Not saying the ones you have listed aren't good. It's just there's certain demographic that.
I was gonna say, there's a different demographic that could be went to a Spartan football game as opposed to a soccer.
Correct.
Sure. And I'm, I'm open to all the suggestions. I know after I was at the soccer field the other day, I was, I went over to the Y afterwards, the exercise, and I went by two churches. I was like, our faith-based organizations, I need to, I need to connect with them to get, get the word out. So I am, again, open to, listen, we all know I like to talk. If there's a group of people, I'm happy to, to go and share in detail and answer good questions, hard questions. I can answer them. So I'm all for it. So just let me know and I'll keep adding to my list.
Laura?
I was just wondering about any plans for collaborating with students because I know Alden has suggestions about, you know, how to, how to put the positive out there, right? And, and I, you know, just to connect with more individuals her age.
Yes.
We've, we've been talking about incorporating student testimonials and using the Student Advisory Council, members from there to talk about the schools and for slightly different project. But I'm sure we could also use it in this context for community outreach.
Yep.
And to your point with the letter campaign, like maybe for us old timers, that's where we see the finish line. But you bringing up that point, maybe you can give some innovative ideas that don't stop at a letter campaign where we're connecting more with the population we're serving, to be honest. You know what I mean?
I do want to make a video, I think.
You've been slacking on the smile, but you know, we're, we're. Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm, I'm gonna go to the middle school meeting. It's Thursday.
Yeah, six o'clock.
I want to take some videos, ask people around. And I'm gonna be working on that. So that's just something I want to be doing independently, but I can also leave you guys in if you want to.
Yeah. And, and I think your, your thoughts and suggestions and all are perfect. And it's a perfect example of how this is a working plan.
Yes.
This is not a done deal. This is constantly going to be evolving and morphing as more thoughts and creative ideas emerge.
I'm just thinking about one of the county agencies that maybe the school system can develop a stronger relationship. Not that we've had a bad relationship. We kind of just haven't had a relationship. I was there a couple of weeks ago when you spoke to the economic tourism and development thing. I mean, part of what is hurting Kent County in its student retention is the fact that there don't seem to be a lot of economic opportunities. I mean, it's, it's, we don't lose, I don't think we lose, lose students so much to Queen Anne's and Cecil and Delaware because of what we're offering in our schools. I think it's a larger question of what we're offering to their parents or their families. So if maybe we could really impress upon that committee as, to start with about really what our schools are financially are bringing to the county. Like I remember your presentation last month, a former county commissioner is a new member of that board and he had no idea, which kind of surprised me of what was going on in our, our schools. He's a product of our school system. His son just graduated about five years ago. I'm just saying that, you know, when you, when you say to somebody, you know what, we just saved families three point two million dollars in getting their kids college and career readiness. That's a huge thing, especially for a county that's small. So if, I just would like to, I, I think one of the really big things to hammer is what a, what a Kent County public school education can mean for somebody economically. So just sort of help drive that point. I mean, I don't mean go to every one of their meetings or anything like that, but I don't think it would hurt.
No, it wouldn't.
Once a year, maybe twice a year to say, give an update. Hey, I wanted to let you know that this is what we're doing.
Yeah.
And how this is really important for the mission that they're supposed to be doing as well. I mean, there's, we should be partners in trying to make Kent County more vibrant as a whole.
I agree.
And maybe real estate agents and, you know, anyhow, everything we can do.
Yeah. And I'll be honest, I think people would be very open to these type of things once we approach them. And it's just nailing down who to approach and what to approach. Let me ask you this, Dr. McComas. Are we as a school system above having sort of like information tables at events? Like I don't know if United Way's event already passed or something like that. Washington College does, I forgot what they call it, but it's like their college and organization day, maybe something like that, Legacy Day. Any event where there's a mass quantity of people in one concentrated area, we need to be out there with some type of public-facing campaign, talking to people directly. And it doesn't always have to be you. It should be other people within your team that should be equipped to handle in the community as well.
Sure. I, I would agree that, you know, as many things that we can be at, sharing the good news of Kent County public schools, we need to be at. I think quite sincerely, our, our challenge becomes manpower.
Yeah.
Our challenge becomes manpower. So, but you know, you have to move them out in one shovel at a time. So.
And I will say, I will say this. The fact that you, now, they just get it in one week, but that's even you know there. But the fact that you actually put this type of thing together, it shows me sort of the innovative leadership that I foresee your vision down the road taking positive effect on our school system. So I do like the thought process and I do like what you put together, even though I gave it the JQ skim twice. But I do like what I think the vision and your mindset is. At least I think I'm understanding.
What about something? I know that the members of SOS did this a couple of years ago and one of, an active member of them mentioned it to you as well. But what about rack cards at the Chamber of Commerce, the visitor's center, all the real estate, you know? Because when somebody's looking to move here, the number one thing they're usually looking at, if they've got a family, is what they're looking at, the schools. So we need to be able to sell our schools. And if we're ever going to get a pivot in our enrollment, we gotta be a little more, I, I know we're asking a lot and it's easy for us because we're just sitting here giving the commands, but we've got to be more active in, in, you know, we can't just rely on the birth rate in Kent County.
Right. And, and I, I will just say that, you know, one of the things I truly believe, and I learned this when I served in Baltimore City Schools as a principal, is public education can no longer sit back and anticipate that everyone will use the school system. We have to function a more entrepreneurial mindset and we have to go after our student population just as private schools do. And I have experience with it. And that's part of why I think a public relations plan is important because what I learned in the last thirteen months is that there is an outdated narrative in our community that is no longer accurate to who Kent County Public Schools is today, or more importantly, who we are becoming. And so I think that the only way to change that is to go after it. I think my challenge is, again, I mentioned manpower, because each one of these things are hours of work, usually beyond the typical duty day. And so that's one challenge is that as we know that we are small. And then the other thing is, it's an example, and I know I've had this conversation with some of our board members, a constraint that we struggle with because of our size is moving multiple strategic initiatives forward simultaneously.
Yes.
Right? Because we exhaust ourselves very quickly because we have so few people.
We're spread.
And so, and that is a legitimate constraint. That doesn't mean that we just say, oh, it's too hard, we won't do it. Right? That's unacceptable. We will do it, but it may take longer than anticipated. It, we, we may have to, you know, have fifty loads of shovels as opposed to like three giant loads, right? So it's, it's a work in progress and we have begun.
Now, I know part of our job is, you know, to be the taskmaster here, but what can the, the board do to support you in that, in that venture?
With me and Coach?
You know, it's a bit of a, well, first, you can join me at any of these public meetings and you too can go to meetings and be an ambassador on behalf of Kent County Public Schools, saving your local families three point two million dollars annually. So you can sign up and help be an ambassador, which I know many of you do. You know, I've seen many of you at community events, but more than just passing through, like they are deliberately to share the good news. I think, you know, this is a bit of a chicken and an egg, right? Because part of our, our severe constraint around personnel is a function of our enrollment, right?
Yeah.
But yet we have to somehow overcome that constraint to try to grow the enrollment, right? So this is a bit of a chicken and an egg. As we have higher enrollment, we'll have more resources. We'll be able to fill out the bench a little bit more than we have right now.
Let me ask you this then. To your point of us getting out there and helping you, it's normally called like an elevator speech, but maybe if you gave us, my thing, yeah.
I have it, I have it now.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I can get you up to speed.
Yeah, just give me some bulletins because I'm always out and about. And people ask me a lot of things about the school system, but it's no real direct answer where I can drive them to support it, if that makes sense.
Sure.
It's, it's, it's real general information from the community. Because it's, do you like the new superintendent? And how is it working with this person? Or what changes you? And I never can really answer that in a way where I feel like personally, I'm driving them back to supporting our school system.
I would offer, ask them questions. Did you know, we saved parents three point two million dollars last year, one graduating class?
Yeah.
Imagine what that number is if we look over the last three years.
Yeah.
Could be upwards of nine million dollars that we saved local families. Right? So you have at least one talking point tonight. Second talking point, new middle school, shovels in the ground, the end of February, walking in the building with students in the fall of twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So that's two talking points you have right now from tonight's, tonight's lesson.
Well, you got, you got some bullets for me. Try them, try them to us.
Okay. Well, I, I, you know, we have things and we can, we can put them together. So I do want to be mindful of the time because you know, I'll, I'll go on. And we have more things to get to.
Okey dokey. So now we're moving to education services.
Thank you, everyone, for your support. Thank you. Thanks. Safe drive.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. McComas, President McGee, and members of the board. This evening, I'm here to present information on a request for a Kent County High School Board Band and Chorus Student Overnight Stay to compete at the Music in the Parks Festival in Williamsburg, located in Williamsburg, Virginia, on April twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six. Just to give you a summary, the KCHS Marching Band Brigade of Blue, the Concert Band, the Jazz Band, the Show Choir will be performing in the festival. There will be approximately forty students and fifteen chaperones. So that would be a two to three per adult in attendance. All students are expected to maintain academic eligibility and be in good standing at Kent County High School in order to attend the event. The cost per student and chaperones would be approximately three hundred dollars. The payment cost would include the hotel stay, a visit to the historic sites of Jamestown Settlement in Colonial Williamsburg, and then the festival cost. The music boosters and the band, Kent County Public School Transportation Account will cover all transportation costs. The band has also secured and is looking for funding through the local arts grant or has applied for that in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to help cover the cost of the trip and keep the student costs down. Students will be responsible for their meals and incidental costs, and they are told about that well ahead of time. And they have the opportunity to fundraise for those amounts. So I'm going to stop for a minute because I gave you lots of information to have you ask any questions. And then we're going to ask for a recommendation of approval.
Is this the, the traditional spring trip like last year? Was it Tennessee? Where'd you guys go?
Gatlinburg.
Dollywood. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
The Music in the Parks Festival is something that is scheduled every year in different locations. We just follow that.
I would think being, instead of traveling to Tennessee, the fact that we're going to Williamsburg would cut down on the cost.
Difference of about five hours transportation.
Yeah.
Yes.
Question about the fifteen chaperones. How many of those are actually administration or leadership positions in a high school that are actually attending the trip?
So Jody Bortz, who is our band director, will be the lead on that trip. And then.
There's now an assistant band director. Will that person be going? We just approved an extra pay for extra duties.
Okay. I'm not real sure. I'm, you know.
Is it primarily, is it primarily band boosters and parents that are?
Band boosters, but then we also have some staff members.
Okay.
That end up going. Yes.
Here to volunteer process, which is getting the full.
Background.
Yes. Question for the price.
Yes.
I'm assuming you're still working on to get it covered to keep the price down for students. But right now, if you were set in stone on this, how much would students be looking to spend to cover some of this cost?
Just some of the, like the incidental costs for the meals and their costs themselves. It's just for the four, I think, for the four nights, for the four days, I believe. I, I'm not sure what you.
And I mean, they, they continue to do fundraisers. We just had a car wash, earned a little over nine hundred dollars on Saturday.
So is this? Okay.
Yeah. With the boosters in general.
And there's opportunities for, I know, because I've.
We sold popcorn last year.
Community members can sponsor a student.
They do, we do have sponsors for individual students. The costs are given to the kids. They are given an itinerary, exactly where they're going, as far as what the cost would be per meals.
I've never heard, I've never heard of it, of a student not being able to go to this because of the cost. Somebody somehow always makes it possible for them and I don't see that changing.
Yeah. And we also offer scholarships. Like it's sort of, you get prioritized based on how many bands you're in. So, and how much you fundraise and how much you show up for the fundraising events. And also the payments are sort of an installation. So for, in December, you have to pay a hundred dollars. And then it sort of is gradual in case that is a barrier. So I've also never heard of someone not being able to go because of money.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is an approval item?
Yeah. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the overnight field trip, the Music in the Parks Williamsburg Festival in Williamsburg, Virginia, on April twenty-third to the twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-six.
Bring a motion to approve the Music in the Park to Williamsburg Festival.
All righty. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Queen had the motion. Mr. Queen had the motion, Ms. McKenzie had the second. Is there any conversation? Alden, anything you want to do to give a plug?
It's really fun. Please approve it.
I call for the vote, all in favor?
Thank you.
It's unanimous. And Ms. Swanson?
Oh, yes.
Alrighty. Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Swanson.
Now, we are moving on to Special Education, Dr. Keane, Staffing Report.
Good evening, President McGee, members of the board, Dr. McComas. I am presenting tonight for your approval, the Kent County Public Schools Special Education Staffing Plan. This plan is, outlines how we are providing your free, the free and appropriate public education for our students with disabilities, and how we are ensuring that those services are being met that are outlined on the IEP. A summary was presented to you, and this plan is pretty comprehensive and detailed of every service that we provide. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
I think for me, and I thank you for the YouTube video, it was very helpful and informative, and that was, I think, for me, I wish that I had had more time to review as comprehensive as a document as this is.
I would agree.
And I need to, I understand there's timelines and things with MSD, but even just one more month would be helpful. It's not that I have any glaring thing where I'm like, oh, there's something obvious that I think is wrong, that's not the case at all. It's just, given the length of it and the depth of details within it, I just would honestly like more time. So I would like to make a motion to move this to a vote to next month, just to allow for one more month to review it.
Well, so, we can do that. I mean, the administration recommends board approval, so I'll ask for a motion, and I won't get it.
Can we, can I ask Dr. Keane to share with us, what is the timeline, and what is the impact if we wait till next month? Which I think Ms. McKenzie raises a great point. I think if you could also let us know annually, when's the soonest you could produce this? So like, I'm thinking forward to next year.
Yes.
Usually, I present this in August. It was asked to be presented in September because we had some staffing, I guess, positions that we still were filling at the end of the year. I don't think there will be anything that will be like glaring for MSD. I can always present it as, to them as a draft with an email that says, it has not been approved by our board yet.
We received information, you know, we could do the two-month thing, you know, we get information one month, we approve it the next month. Would that give board members enough time?
That'd be fine. I don't want to unnecessarily delay it. I just think, just having received it on Wednesday was not quite sufficient between now and Monday to review it.
Then that actually takes me out of my gray area of, I think this is something I need to approve, but I'm not fully abreast on exactly what this information is, so I tend to agree with Laura with this.
I've got a question for you. So I know back in May, you didn't have the data. I was at the, your end-of-year thing at CAC. And I remember you talking individually with parents because you didn't have data that... Did we ultimately get that data? I know you, there were other ways, you were like individually going to family to family to family, but did we ultimately get that?
We did get that data, and we will be reviewing it at every CAC meeting throughout the year. CAC, again, is the fourth Wednesday of every month, except for November and December. I encourage and invite everybody to attend, but we will be reviewing that data throughout the year. And the staffing plan does address a little bit of that data with our areas of focus being on the instruction of students with disabilities, along with disproportionality, making sure that we are really looking at those pre-referral strategies through our SST process, our Student Service Team process, where we're looking at what is happening before we identify a student with special needs.
When there were times when there was a worry about overidenti, I don't know if that's the right word, over identifying?
Yeah, that's the disproportionality data that's outlined in this plan.
Okay.
So I understand, but this is actually explaining the implementation of it through our school year, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then it also looks at, you know, like, how many students as of October 1st, 2024, were sitting in our classrooms compared to now? So we have seen an increase in students over the, of course, the school year. We had quite a few students who did move in into our district in August and September. You know, we kind of always joke around and say, you know, when parents see the yellow bus, that's usually when we get the influx of the students. Because, I mean, that's when they're like, oh, summer's over, got to get to school and register our children. We did have, as of last week, we had 23 of our enrollees have final piece, yes.
Alrighty. So we're good for postponing this, push the pause until next month, and you don't think there'll be any consequences?
No, I don't think so.
Alrighty. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Student Attendance Enrollment Report.
Good evening, President McGee, Dr. McComas, and members of the board. Tonight, I bring a preliminary beginning of the year of the school year enrollment report. As, it's accurate as of this past Friday, September the 5th. As you know, enrollment is fluid, it can change daily. In October, I will bring you a more detailed unofficial September 30th report, as I always do. And it's unofficial until the state, you know, verifies the number of students.
When's that happen?
That's usually in December, we get the official count.
I think we get it in October.
Really? Is it that early?
I believe so.
Late October, past, it would be after we get our, we have our October board meeting?
Yes, it will be after the October.
So we wouldn't get it till November. Does that sound right?
Okay, that is correct.
We want to stand out at you.
Our overall enrollment has increased by 22 students from the time of our official September 30th count until September 5th. As you can see, we have seven more elementary students, 10 more middle school, and five more high school students, for a total of 22, plus 22 students. On the next slide, you will see the breakdown for every grade and each school, and how it compares to September 30th, 2024. I'll give you a second to look at that and see if you have any questions. Our official September 30th, 2024 count was 1,694 students. And as of Friday, we had 1,716 students.
And Dr. McComas, this was a year we were foreseeing negative 10 in students, correct?
Correct. So, I mean, you know, I'm hopeful, cautiously hopeful.
Got this hope?
And even grows, right? I mean, because lots of things, it is, fluid seems to be the word of the night. So it's, you know, enrollment is fluid up until the 30th. And, you know, once we get our number on the 30th, and we submit that to MSD, MSD cross-verifies enrollment across the school system so that, you know, if Mary McComas withdrew from Kent County and went, you know, someplace else, they want to make sure that we're not counting a student twice in two different school systems. So that's what the state does when they, before that we get the official. And that's why sometimes the preliminary, we may think we have so many, but then the official comes back different, because maybe they discovered a student was identified in two school systems, and then they confirmed which school system the student is actually attending.
You know, just to show you how significant, especially, because all we can talk about is dwindling in enrollment, how significant one family can mean. One family just put five, all five of their sons back in our school system. That's huge, that's, that's 25% of our increase right there.
One family, that's fantastic. Thank you, family, for choosing Kent County Public Schools.
Ms. Swanson?
But does this count, include foreign exchange students?
It includes, if we have foreign exchange students, yes. It includes foreign exchange students.
So sometimes, like, I know there were like five, there were a bunch of foreign exchange students last year, so... If the count ever drops in that sense, it doesn't, it's not necessarily bad, it's just because they had to go back.
And if they're with us before September 30th, they're part of the count. If they arrive after September 30th, they're not part of their funding count.
I believe the rule is you have to attend in September and at least one day in October to be counted.
And it's only pre-K on, so it doesn't count our three-year-olds over at the Presbyterian Church, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
And just so that you could have a comparison of where we were this time last year, I added another slide, and this is...
Middle school was hurting last year.
September 3rd, 2024, compared to the previous year's official September 30th count.
So, I offer positive vibes.
Let's hope it holds. Let's hope it holds. Even if it is a plus five, it's better than negative 10.
Thank you very much.
That's actually good news.
Yep. So there's another talking point. Kent County Public Schools is growing.
Now, hold on, don't blow my list too much.
Like, three points, three points.
Two and three, two and three.
$3.2 million saved, new middle school, shovels in the ground. Growing and rolling.
Alrighty.
We got it.
No more questions? I think that's it for the time being. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Walker, for the good news.
Alright, Ms. Jackomolitz, the MCAP Achievement Report.
I always feel like the MCAP should have a drum roll that comes with it, right? Like, this is like the Super Bowl score here.
Alright. Good evening, President McGee, members of the board, Dr. McComas. As you're well aware, we are approaching it a little differently in that we sent a presentation ahead of time. And at this time, would like to give an opportunity for any questions or clarifications regarding the state results for the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program.
Sure, I mean, I could start. Just as far as, you know, some regression that occurred with ELA scores, I just wasn't sure, I would like to get a better understanding of your assessment of that data and how you are, you know, plan moving forward, you know, why some of that happened, and...
So I'm sure, it's a little hard, I don't know if we want to put that slideshow up here? We can look at the particular, thank you, Bill.
Could we, if you could go to the slide on the ELA grade levels, there we go, that's it, thank you.
And when I look at this, what I believe you're referring to is third grade in particular, is that what you were?
I think so.
And so one of the things we know about the English Language Arts Assessment is that you are looking at students that are taking the assessment for the very first time. So, excuse me, if you look at the blue, which is students that are, were in third grade last year, we have no measure to see to compare how they did the previous year to this year. That is their first year. But if we look at last year's third graders, which is colored orange under grade level three, and compare them to how they're doing in fourth grade with the recent data, that's comparing the same cohort of students from year to year. And what you'll see there, I believe it was an 11% increase in reading proficiency. One of the other things that stands out as I think about that question is just the measure for our MCAP assessment is looking at students that achieve levels three and four. So in the slideshow, you may recall, and I'll go back to that, there are four levels, three and four, basically measuring students that are either proficient or distinguished. And one of the areas that as a school system has been a struggle for a number of years is really building what we call the foundational skills in early reading. And those foundational skills were the reason that we as a school system shifted and moved to that approach of using Orton-Gillingham as part of our foundational program. So you may be wondering, how does that correlate, what we're seeing here and the work that we're doing in Orton-Gillingham? So that's a multi-year plan to really build those foundational skills. And if we look at our data, which is not showing unfortunately in this slideshow, it may be something that we do down the road, and we were to look at the students that are performing at what we call the lowest level, which is level one, meaning that really, they're not getting any of those basic skills in early reading to be able to even understand, interpret, and then provide a written response. In the year 2022, we had almost 18% of our students in that lowest level. We have now, over the course of the past few years with the Orton-Gillingham program, moved that from 18% down to 6%, 6.5% of students performing at the lowest level, which I think is another way of showing not the advancement as opposed to the regression of our students. Is that satisfactory? Is that where we want to be? Absolutely not. We recognize that really to move our students out of that lowest level and into proficiency, one of the things that we have committed to is really putting a district-wide focus on the area of writing proficiency, and having our students gain confidence and competence in being able to respond to the text in a written response that's proficient. So that is something we're doing as a school system through various strategies, and I'd be happy to share those, but I just want to make sure that I have answered your question.
Yeah, sure, and I'm just curious, of the ones that were lower, and then, and we've decreased so that they're scoring higher, what, what grade range does that include, just if you happen to know off the top of your head?
That were scoring lower before, and now they are scoring higher. I think we captured it best with the greatest highlights on the top right. So fourth grade and seventh grade, we saw significant increases.
So that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Right, but I think Ms. McKenzie's question is, the students that we moved from the lowest performing into developing?
Yes.
Is that your question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is the students who went from developing into proficient or distinguished. So they're two different, we'll have to dig into that and bring that further. And that's why I know Ms. Jackomolitz and I discussed earlier, bringing forward a future presentation, it kind of gets into that more because...
Showing the cohorts, and maybe even looking more closely at the levels. It's a lot of information to unpack, and what we're trying to do here is mirror the way the state showcases the data, but I think we can do it our own way as well, that might be a better, to have us gain a better understanding of how we're moving students from that lower level into the upper levels of proficiency.
Question about the eighth group. First, before the eighth grade, why is there no ninth grade? Is it because they don't take the MCAP?
Right, there isn't a MCAP test for ninth-grade literacy.
So for me, one of the things that's alarming is when you look at the both ELA and math in eighth grade, it is very, very low, it has dramatically decreased. Why in that grade in both do we see that? Is it something that has to do with data, maybe the teaching curriculum? Maybe we changed something in the last two years that, you know, maybe haven't been able to track in a positive manner yet? But to see that type of decrease in eighth grade, especially with our focus coming up, with Steen being on that middle school grades, that's alarming for eighth grader to turn around going right into ninth, not even being able to assess them, then they jump in 10th, that could also start to sway the 10th grade data. So specifically, not to be long-winded with my question, eighth grade and why that major decrease in both in MCAP?
And was it statewide, or is it just our own personal experience?
There is a trend in eighth grade statewide, and I will say for us, two things I'd like to speak to. First, English Language Arts in eighth grade. And one of the things that we know is as students progress throughout the years, the text complexity increases tremendously by grade eight. What's interesting, and I really don't know, even after all these years, the cause of this, is there seems to be this tremendous improvement when they get to 10th grade. So you see the students, and this has been year after year after year. So eighth graders tend to struggle on their literacy assessment, and yet, when they move through that nine and 10th grade year, you'll see, you'll see a significant improvement in terms of student success. Our students in particular struggle with informational text, is one of the areas, again, when we unpack what's happening in eighth grade. So that, again, is an emphasis with some of the decisions that have been made with our core program. So we have not been using it very long, but we moved from a more traditional English Language Arts to what is now called, you've heard us mention this, Witten Wisdom, where they are exposed to many more opportunities to experience that informational text. And it's also more of a focus on how, allowing students to express what they're learning through their writing and other, other ways as well. And it's also more of a focus on how, allowing students to express what they're learning through their writing and other, other ways as well. So I think trying to better align what's happening in our day-to-day assessments in the classroom with the way they are assessed at the end of the year is one of the ways that we're shifting to move that trajectory in ELA. Math is a different story, and I'm sure that most of you have, have heard this story before. What happens in eighth grade is now suddenly we have a pocket of students that are no longer taking the assessment. So they are in Algebra I in eighth grade. So if you have a class of 100 students, you may have 25 sitting in an Algebra I class. They are pulled out of the N in the eighth grade data in math, and now your denominator is smaller, and the students that are left taking the eighth grade math are those that are also often in intensive interventions as well. So your more advanced students are in the Algebra I. So it's just, there's no clear one answer to the why, but I will tell you, it is our team's challenge to continue to look at that and try to see, is there something else that will help us move that needle and move the achievement in the right direction?
I also think, and because you said this, you've seen this as a larger trend for this eighth grade, or, did you, wait, did you mean like for the specific group of eighth graders or just eighth grade?
Eighth grade in general.
Oh, well, I was thinking, I think my little brother's in eighth grade right now, and I think when COVID happened, he was in second or third grade. And, I mean, that's when kids are getting comfortable reading, and that's when, you know, you learn these foundational math concepts like multiplication and division. I remember it was a third grade thing, and it was like a really big shift for me. So that is also, could be contributing to the specific cohort of eighth graders. And I think it was really interesting what you said. I didn't realize that the Algebra I kids got taken out of this. And usually, the people who are in Algebra I are the STEM, it's usually the STEM.
Or accelerated.
Yes, so that's also.
Same point I just made with the eighth graders with the multilingual learners. They're going to the same downward trend. I'm not as, at, in, at, I'm not knowledgeable in multilingual learners and what that actually consists of. First, could you explain what that consists of, but then tell me why their trend is also going down over the last three years?
Sure. And again, it's, it's interesting when you have a system our size. So when you, multilingual learners are students who are at home speaking the language and identified and have a plan in place, that English is not their primary language at home. Sorry, that was a roundabout way to say that. So they receive services. Cassie Swayze is our primary point of contact for our multilingual learners. And I'm so proud that in Kent County, this is the first year we have been able to do a job well done in all schools, providing support onsite. Garnett, Galena, our middle school and our high school all have staff onsite specifically to support our multilingual learners.
May I add to that? So, you know, just hear what she just said. We expanded our number of ESOL teachers, right, that we did not have before. So we're running to try to get in front of a growing population of students who English is not their first language. And so just, that's, that's an additional thing that we put in place this year despite that huge deficit that we are working through. And then I, I know you're probably going to talk about the professional development that we're laying in. I will say, this is an area, you know how I was speaking earlier about that staffing constraint, right? So Ms. Swayze is our best expert, if you will. She's an ESOL certified teacher, and that, this is her area of expertise. She teaches, we don't even, we're not even able to have her as a central leader to help us provide more services kind of broadly, right? So it's an example of how constrained we are, but yet we are stretching to try to get in front of it, and particularly with their growing English learner population.
And one of the reasons I was trying to get to the point also, you may see fluctuation, is that the numbers are so small. So when you tease apart students in grades three through eight, I believe we have close to 80 students, it may be slightly higher as a school district, but then when you squeeze that down to grades three through eight, you may be looking at 50 students or fewer in the school system that are taking this assessment. One of the things you can't see is how many students have received services and are now exiting. So if the N changes from one year to the next, it's going to switch your graph all around. So it's kind of hard to feel like you have a a grasp on the measure. That is a positive change if they've gained enough skill set that they no longer qualify as a multilingual learner, but now they've exited that program. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Ms. Jakomolitz, have we ever presented WIDA data?
We have not to the board. So that would be something, and Cassie would be very excited to share that information.
Yeah, so the WIDA, it's a test, and forgive me, I don't remember what WIDA stands for, but it is the Language Fluency Test that we, students who are non-English speakers, you know, their, their home language is other than English, we measure their proficiency as they are gaining English proficiency. And when students hit typically, I think it's a score in the level four of the WIDA assessment, then they're semi-exited from ESOL services because they have developed enough English language to not need so much support. And so that's a measure of their growing language proficiency. And that's a good data point for us to consider bringing forward, I think.
I'm sorry, do you want to say something?
And let me ask this. The four categories that a student might can be in, is this to your point about if they exit out, so let's say they African-American disadvantaged and multilingual, they could exit out of maybe multilingual and then still be economic, okay.
That's right. It's interesting, and it changes. It changes the display of the data.
Right, and I appreciate you acknowledging that we have students who are counted multiple times, right? You know, you could have a student who has, you know, co-variables.
The third piece to supporting our multilingual learners is that of professional development. And although Cassie is now sort of doing two jobs in one, serving students and also serving as our primary contact, she has taken time this summer to really build a strong connection with our local team of multilingual teachers, and they are being trained in what's called PSYOP, and I may need to lean on Dr. McComas.
Stands for Sheltered Instructional Observation Protocol, and it is teaching methodologies for how, as a general classroom teacher, how do you support that student who's in your classroom, who isn't proficient, proficient yet in, in English, but they're still there and they're smart and they're able to learn. So what are the strategies that teachers need to know and be able to apply and plan for in their classroom to support students as they're picking up English? And so PSYOP is, is, right now, she's working with her.
The cohort to receive the training, and then what they will do beginning in the spring as well as next school year is bring that information to the school so they can train the teachers. So it'll be sort of that train-the-trainer model.
Yes, that's the goal, because just as we all serve students with IEP, we all serve students who may have a different language than English. And so this is part of that building teacher capacity. The strategies in PSYOP are strong instructional strategies that in truth help all learners, just like many of the strategies we identify as supporting students with IEP services. And so it is the, the number one in professional development that we need general education teachers of whatever grade level to have, right? It's one more set of tools in their tool belt to serve students in their classroom. And that's what we have a, as she explained, it's like a multi-tiered process of rolling out this professional development.
There are two other supports that are fairly new for our multilingual learners that we've received positive feedback. One is Rosetta Stone. So that was a purchase that the school system made, and our students have access to that. And the other for communication purposes, and I have to give a shout out to our community school specialists, because with their advocacy in wraparound services, as well as our counselors and social workers, we've been able to really expand the use of what's called the Genie app. So if we have parents that, or family members that speak another language, the language is no longer a barrier, we can immediately, staff members can immediately get online and have someone help to translate that information and help interpret to communicate, improve the communication.
And we, we pay for the Genie service, and we expanded access. So we, when I got here last year, we had.
It was very few people.
It was very few people, because it's essentially, think about it as a phone call, right? Like, I call and I'm having a conversation with this parent here who speaks Spanish. I, I call the Genie app and say, I need to speak to Ms., you know, Hernandez for our conference. The Genie interpreter calls Ms. Hernandez, speaks in Spanish, and so they help us have that conversation. But you do pay for the subscription per licensure, so we expanded that mid-year last year. And so we are trying to build out our systems and structures to support multilingual families and.
What about, I'm just curious, were, were other translation apps explored? I mean, I know I've seen commercials of people like holding a phone and they're just sharing this phone back and forth. I just don't know if that's, if there are reasons why something.
Sure. The, the Genie app was, they had already selected before I got here where I have served before, we used Language Line, so there are different services. I'm not sure.
And we did. We researched that for the budget. Dr. McComas had asked us to look into it, so Kathy did research and actually with a comparison of the two programs. And based on that information, we decided to continue with the Genie app at this point. They were very similar services, and Genie app was slightly more cost-effective.
Just one more thing for multilingual, and Ms. Jakomolitz, I cannot remember, with our platform where we keep our plans for multilingual learners, and it has the instructional strategies and, and kind of many professional developments that teachers can go on.
I know exactly what you're talking about because we put it in the budget, but I can't think of the name. I'm sorry. I can bring that back.
I only have one more question. In what ways are we learning from the success of other counties that have, like, say, similar demographic centers?
I would say as the smallest system, we rely on the lessons that we learn within our own district, but certainly across other districts as well. We do something called benchmarking. So as an Eastern Shore team, we have opportunities to meet as an Eastern Shore literacy team and math team. And then also, last year, the state offered something called Literacy Labs. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but we sent a cohort of teachers along with our coordinator, Michelle Serino, to visit other high-performing districts and bring back to us best practices. Some of those that we since then adopted included the 95% group, which was a strategy that was used on the lower shore in a very high-performing district to help support readers both in upper elementary and middle school that were still struggling to learn to read. And also, just ideas on, you know, what it is that they have evidence of really changing things in their school. And so often it came back to the people, as it often does in education, and they talked about the power of the literacy coaches and how when they have them in their schools, it's the coaches that provide the job embedded professional development that are the arms and the eyes. When the principal is pulled to do something else, they can focus just on coaching new teachers or struggling teachers and giving that timely feedback.
Some of the successes of the MCAP, I'm, I'm not going to lie, I'm going to be honest, I was surprised at the math. And outside of multilingual learner, every other category had significant increase. For me, seeing economically disadvantaged, 70% of our students are in poverty, to see that increase was very, very good. African-Americans, that increased, but what shocked me was the males overall. So what are some of the successes or things we're implementing that we can now say? Because this is a three-year comparison, so we can now look at and say, well, we know these things are definitely working in math. What are some of those things?
Well, we appreciate the opportunity to share where we are at this point, because I will tell you, as soon as this data comes out, I feel really sorry for our local accountability coordinator because her phone won't stop. The principals want to know immediately, can it be released? Can I look at the students? How are they doing? There is such an urgency. And so as we looked at the performance in math, one of the things that we believe contributed to the positive change in the trajectory is really beginning to have a deeper understanding of the elements of effective math instruction. So we've given many resources to our teachers, including the adoption of, as you know, illustrative math. Probably tired of hearing that. That's our core math program all the way through. And when you have something like that, if you are not given the time to really understand the elements of how to plan for a unit, and what does a 90-minute math block look like, that has been the focus of the school-based teams, as well as the focus that our math coordinator has been emphasizing as she's working with leadership and school-level teachers as well. That is one piece. I do have to say that our teachers are relentless, and many a times when we are in the math classrooms, there is a push to really deepen their own understanding. At the elementary level, you have to become experts in all areas. So when you look at what it takes to be a highly effective math teacher and push growth in the right direction, you really have to build your own capacity in understanding the skills and strategies in those different standards. For example, fourth grade, fractions, forever a struggle. So what our principals have learned is some of the resources that help with using manipulatives to build what's called conceptual understanding. So in fourth grade, they use things like fraction tiles to help students not only hear it, but to see it and to build it and to understand what that means to put together and take apart numbers. So the same thing in the high school, oh my gosh, there is such passion on that high school math team. And the times that I've had the privilege of being in there to listen to the conversations, they are driven to get to the individual student level. Their academy has improved in strength in trying to really see what those needs are and the work that they're doing. And they embedded something called Alex. I'm not a professional on it, but I will tell you that Alex is a program that is adaptive, and it is based on individual student needs in mathematics. So that was another tool in the toolkit of our math teachers. They used it strategically because what you don't want to do is rely just on a computer. So they would partner it, and probably the most powerful thing, again, is people. Those math teachers would sit one-on-one with students and help them. And the other thing that happened to me at the high school are students helping other students. So we had some in the classroom during that academy time stuck, and one of our math teachers asked a fellow higher achieving math student, can you sit and you explain it? And guess what? They got it. I mean, the teacher was like, just beating herself up because she wasn't getting it, and that student-to-student explanation was like a breakthrough. So I think there's no really one magic answer to what's shifting it, but we are seeing, I think, a major transition in professional practices, and you have the commitment of our school leaders and teachers as well as our district to continue on that path.
For me, one final question for the MCAP math highlights. It says closing the gap, closing gap against the state. When you look at our math scores and say, hey, these are something that we all can say, great job Kent County Public Schools on, but then you look at the proficiency percentile, we're still 16%. So how, how does that work? That formula where we can move up to maybe the middle of the pack?
I would, I mean, I'm going to speak from my own personal experience and don't change course. This is work that takes time. It's grueling, and every time in Kent County we are pushed to do something different, we can't become experts in that field. So I think sometimes you have to trust and allow our teachers to gain the knowledge and continue to work for understanding the standards, and you're going to continue to see that growth. Benchmark against other schools, don't be afraid to go out and see, but trust me, we are, we are going to continue to see are there other pieces that are missing. But shifting the course from what is a research-based, effective core program, I think would be a great mistake. I think we're on the right path, we're doing the right work.
I think that's an excellent point.
I think continuity is really important, especially for kids, in my experience. And I get that people always, there's always a new study about this new teaching method and this new way you should be learning, and it's, it's, it's a thing. And we all want the best come, kind of interventions for our students, obviously, but I think it is more beneficial to them to stick with what we know is working for the moment and master that. And maybe make little changes along the way, but we're doing the best service to our students by giving them a continuous learning experience.
Agreed. Tweak don't change, because you start to benchmark over if you're changing every two years, every three years, and then we come hold you. And then we come hold you all to the standard of, man, what are y'all doing? Look at the scores. But we just changed the curriculum or the testing protocol for y'all two years ago. Math is great job, English, I'm eh, but math outstanding.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administration Services, Mr. Kirby.
Good evening, Dr. McComas, President McGee, members of the board. I'm here tonight to present our August 30th expenditure report and our revenue report. So as you'll see here for Fund One, our cash receipts and our revenue for the year thus far, we're at about $6.8 million. School construction, we don't have any receipts yet, but we will here shortly. And then for Fund Five, our food service, we're at about $172,000, giving us a total as of August 31st of just shy of $7 million in receipts. So if you scroll further down, here's our Fund One current expense broken out into categories. This will look very different next month because as of September 1st, all of our encumbrances will hit for instruction salaries, special education salaries, student transportation salaries. So, you know, I see, you know, it's got a large remaining balance of about $27 million. That will obviously, you know, shrink very quickly here soon once those all hit. So, you know, starting next month, we'll really start to get a good picture of where we are budget-wise moving forward through the rest of this fiscal year and then in the fiscal, into the next fiscal year. So if we scroll down, as I mentioned, here's the school construction fund thus far. So just a reminder that these are all expenses that are then reimbursed by the state or the county. So while they have their own expenditure report, they're really not true expenses because they essentially get, you know, washed between the state and the local government. Our food service fund, at this point in the year, they're very similar in terms of next month, we'll see a large increase in their salaries and wages for their encumbrances. Food service, as you'll see, does have a piece of equipment still encumbered. That will change here shortly as we move that into the grant that it's coming from essentially. So we'll have to do a recode from that equipment account into that grant account. So this should disappear here shortly. And it will essentially go into the restricted fund accounts that you'll see on the next slide down.
So just a quick question. And when you're talking about how the encumbrances will change, does that mean the amounts and like the budgeted amount then shifts to the encumbrances or?
So, so now the budget amount will stay the same. That encumbrance column will grow larger essentially. Because those are basically all of our contracted employees, our 10-month employees. So at that point in time is when they're already budgeted in the first column, but you'll start to see the true expense in that second column, starting next month really. Once those encumbrances finally hit here shortly.
And that's because of how the school year and budgeting.
Just because of how the contracts work, they're from September through the end of June. So basically if you see any salaries and wages currently in, in year-to-date expenditures, that, that's from summer school or for our 12-month employees essentially. So secretaries, central office staff, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Yep. So, and then any other questions for there?
Yeah, well, not for there, I'll wait till you finish because my question is just an ongoing question. Just to be refreshing my memory.
Sure, no problem. And then at the very bottom here, you'll see the restricted funds. Just a reminder that we are waiting on our final audited financial statements. That will help us set our budget amount for what's going to be the restricted funds for moving forward, so.
When do you anticipate that?
It's typically hopefully by the end of September. So if we're still on track as of now, the auditors are working, they have all of our reports. We don't have any other information to send them at this point in time. So we're hoping in the next few weeks here, we'll have at least a preliminary draft. So that way we can start setting this restricted fund budget essentially.
Yeah, because we need to jump on that as soon as possible.
Yep. So, so as I said, you know, this will look different, hopefully starting next month. You know, we won't have just essentially a blank budgeted amount column anymore. We'll have true numbers and true data.
Okay.
Question.
Sure.
I forgot what we left off about the contingency fund. Did we decide we're not doing that anymore? Like where?
No, we still have our policy in place and I brought for a procedure outlining that when a fiscal year is wrapped up, so let's take our case example of last fiscal year. We moved to use the contingency fund. That fiscal year is in the audit process right now. At the end of that audit process, we will see what is in the fund balance. And the priority will be to replenish the contingency 500 first. And if there's anything more than the 500, then that would be sort of the working fund balance.
But that would be next month.
Yeah, I think in October, November, I think last year.
Usually middle of October.
But with that, I'm, I'm trying to remember at the last meeting, we decided whether or not we want to use that, eliminate the contingency fund?
I think we discussed it, but I, I thought where we land it was we wouldn't, we would keep the, I don't think we made a motion to not continue to have a contingency line. It's my understanding.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't think we made a, we discussed the functionality of it. And I think we probably landed on, let's see how this audit goes. Because this will be the first real audit without those massive emergency COVID grants. So now we're really going to see what our real working, yeah. And so I think we had a very large fund balance for a number of years because we had the benefit of those grants.
Yeah.
You know, so I think it's kind of re norming and then we can see how it goes.
Any other questions for expenditure report?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Mr. Hushin.
Thank you, President McGee, Dr. McComas, school board members. In front of you, you have a report. There's been a lot of changing on, a lot of changes that have taken place with staffing that have impacted the roles for the various MAB subgroups that all of us sit on. This is one of the final changes where I sit on the MAB Workers' Comp Trust as the trustee. We no longer have a, an alternate. So I am bringing forward Mr. Craig Kirby as the Workers' Compensation Alternate Trustee for your approval.
This evening. Administration recommends Mr. Craig Kirby to serve as the alternate trustee for the May Worker Compensation Pool. I'm looking for a motion for that effect.
Motion to approve Craig Kirby.
Mr. Queen has made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKenzie's made the second, is there any discussion? I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, alrighty, I think you're still up, Mr. Hushin.
Yes, thank you. So separate from MAB, we also have ESMEC Trust. With the ESMEC Health Alliance, we have myself that serves as the trustee. And then we have a second trustee who has to come from one of our collective bargaining units. Over the various years, KCTA has always sent forward a nomination with their recent retirement of Krista Collison, who served in this role for the last two years. They have sent forth a new trustee that I am bringing forward to you tonight for approval. And that is Megan Jones, who was our Kent County High School Health Occupations teacher, just like Ms. Collison was.
Alrighty, the administration recommends Megan Jones to serve as the KCPS Employee Trustee for the ESMEC Health Trust. I'm looking for a motion.
Bring a motion to approve Megan Jones.
Mr. Queen has made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. McKenzie's made the second, is there any discussion? Alrighty, I call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Alrighty, we have a budget adjustment. Mr. Kirby, that's you again.
Good evening again, everybody. My purpose here is to request approval of Budget Amendment Number Two for fiscal year 2026 of our unrestricted funds account. So essentially what happened is MSD had a clerical error with our career and college readiness revenue that they are projected for us. So if you remember last month, we had brought forward the first budget amendment for this year where they essentially told us that we had more for CCR. Now they have turned around and said we have less than what they told us last month. So, so the net effect of it is about $1,600 decrease from what we originally anticipated having for college and career readiness. So I know it says, you know, $18,800.
It's a lot easier to absorb than $18,000.
Yeah, so, so, you know, it's just keep in mind that large increase was due to last month having the first adjustment. Now we got another adjustment to kind of bring it back down pretty much to what it already was in the first place, so.
Alrighty, the administration recommends, excuse me, yeah, recommends board approval of the unrestricted fund budget amendment number two for fiscal year 2026. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ms. McKenzie has made the motion.
A second.
Mr. Queen has seconded, any discussion? Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous, alrighty.
Thank you.
Moving now to discussion, for, excuse me, board discussion. Ms. Watson, I'll start with you.
All right. Um, before I talk about my stuff, I just want to know why we rearranged the agenda. Because I was not aware that we were moving board discussion all the way down.
Ms. McKenzie, do you want to speak on your?
Yeah, I will, I will speak to that. So back in, I think it was May, I attended a MAB workshop for Boards of Education Presidents. And I actually called Dr. McComas after the meeting. It's the mess, it's the best workshop I've ever attended. And I was actually really animated and excited about all the, the things they said about how to make a board meeting more efficient. The board meetings are the business of the board, for one thing. We've been going till 11 o'clock at night, which has been very late. So conversation, Dr. McComas and I had a number of conversations. We came up with a strategy that we thought would help make the meetings more efficient. So one of the things we decided was we, I don't know if you noticed, we took out one of the public participations, moved all the things that were sort of action items up at the top, get the presentations lower down and then board discussions at, at the end, which we hoped also would sort of move things along.
Yeah, clear out some questions.
And among other things, page nine of the Board of Education Handbook also says board meetings should be over by 10 o'clock.
We've been breaking the rules.
Right, and that the smog can leave earlier and, and out of courtesy to you being. I would also offer that, I also share with Ms. McGee things I had seen in other LEAs board meetings. So in other LEAs, board discussion was at the end. And they only had one public comment. In fact, one of the LEAs, they typically, and not that I'm advocating that we need to do this, but they have two meetings a month. And in one of their two meetings, they don't even have any public comment. Because the public can, and when the public wants to let you know, they're going to email us anyway, right? They will let us know. So I'm not dismissing it and I do believe in public discourse and, and commentary. But just this idea of how to make it focused and efficient so we can get the business of the board taken care of and, and, and not get bogged down so early in the, in the evening. I'm also, as you can see, we're working to shift our practice around presentations to try to put them together, narrate them so that the time that we have together, like what's most important for our time? To have the dialogue, right? Because I do believe in the public discussion and to try to be as comprehensive as, as we can be.
So, so to go back into that, so Mr. Hushin and I happened to be on a legislative MAB meeting this, this morning. And interestingly enough, the representative from Frederick County said, if he had his way, there would be no public discussion. And then the chair of the committee, who's from St. Mary's County, then countered and said, but then you, you know, you cut off public participation, it's, it's, there's, there's the yin and the yang kind of thing. The other thing is, is as an example of what happened last week, the, I mean, last month, that meeting, I gavelled that meeting at 11:15. I got a phone call from a fellow board member on my way home and our conversation ended at 12:19 the following morning. So, you know, and that particular meeting, board discussion lasted maybe 45 minutes. Matter of fact, I think Mr. Hushin got up to make his presentation when the first board member had just finally finished what they had to say. So, you know, if, if at the end of the meeting, you still feel like you want to talk for 45 minutes, you're not holding anybody else up, you're just holding ourselves up. Not you personally, but I'm just saying. So that was, that was it. Dr. McComas sent out a, an email to all the board members and we probably should have sent one to you too. So it was not an oversight, but that, in the spirit of transparency, that's exactly how it happened.
Good, I mean, I like all these changes, I just was.
I want to agree with that.
So we'll start with Ms. Watson.
Um, okay, okay, another question I have for board discussion and stuff, just while we're talking about technicalities.
Well, we still got an hour since we had 10 o'clock, so go right ahead.
I know. Same there, efficient mind here.
Yeah. I was never really told what I was supposed to do with my board discussion, so I sort of just made it my own. And sometimes I talk about events coming up and sometimes I talk about my stuff on the Student Advisory Council or the American Exchange Project or whatever. But is board discussion like a place to be saying, come to our football game? Or like, is it a place to talk with you guys? Like, I, I think student members in the past and student members that I talk with, some of them just like give a slideshow, slideshow presentation of all the events that are happening.
Yeah, I think from my, from my experience, since I, this is year 11 for me, mo, most of the board members have basically given a calendar of events, which I felt anybody could have done. I felt like that was shortchanging a student, a student member of the boards' opportunity to really speak. And I feel like Matty Messick sort of broke that mold a little bit into your predecessor and started talking more about things. I really liked what you've talked about. I mean, there's no reason you can't say this is what's going on. You talked about doing your visit, your video, your student advisory thing. I mean, I think the real reason to have a student member of the board is to really get the students' perspective. You're lucky in, whoever is the smog in Kent County is fortunate because Kent County only has five schools. It's not like you got to talk to a representative from 15 high schools to figure out what's going on. So I personally, and everybody else can chime in, I feel like you should say whatever you want to talk about.
And I concur, because this is your chance to showcase why you're up here and speak about the public school system from a student point of view. Because I'll be honest, in mine, if I want to talk about my family, I will. If I want to talk about what you just brought up, I will. If I want to do a public service announcement as an elected official to the community, I will. So I would say don't limit yourself because it, for me, when I hear everyone kind of go and talk their, talk their talk during the board discussion, it gives me an idea where you are and what you're thinking. And then it helps me align with whatever your, your, your positive things is for the school system. So I would say do what you've been doing.
Keep doing what you're doing, okay, that's a good answer.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Keep rolling.
Have a nice conversation. So then I think what I want to talk about mainly is I've talked a bit with Dr. McComas about rearranging how the Student Advisory Council works a little bit. I think I learned a lot last year in the sort of, I think, just semester that we had the Student Advisory Council. And I think I wanted to, I think I got to in the weeds of like, school event sort of things and organizing things for the students. But like, that could really have been the job of an SGA or a National Honor Society or something like that. And I think I want to refocus it to be more about communication. And it, we don't have to, I don't think we, the students necessarily have to do much. They just have to talk and listen. And I'm sort of trying to figure out how to do that more effectively this year. I'm thinking of maybe having only one meeting before, one meeting a month, like to, with these, with the agenda items, maybe the Friday before and talking about what's going on, what's going to be happening at the board meeting and just having a conversation about that with my, with the cohort of students. I'm sort of fuzzy brained about it right now, but I'm just wanting to let you know, I'm changing. I think I'm going to change how I'm going to go about it a little bit. And hopefully it will be easier for you guys to reach out to me and to reach out to the students and to like more concretely have a line of communication. So I just wanted to let you know that I'm working on that and that's still a project that I'm, that's evolving. For the public, I wanted to say, I, the school started. I can't believe we're already in week three. It feels like, I, I really like this news, this early start date. It feels like we're ahead of the game. And it's also, I feel like that sentiment is shared by everyone. I don't, I don't feel like. I don't, I don't feel like school's been going on forever already. It still, it feels, still feels new, but it feels like we're getting a jump on things. Come out to sports games at the high school if you have the chance. Our first home football game is September twenty-sixth at six P M. We have soccer games going on every week, first cross-country meet. And only cross-country meet is this Wednesday at four, if you want to come out to that. So I just wanted to shout out our athletics because fall athletics are my favorite. And also just wanted to say thank you to Dr. McComas for everything that you've been doing. I remember when we did the superintendent interviews two years ago, I guess it was two years ago at this point. Wow. I remember sitting down at the table and we just started talking and you said, what are some problems that you have that you think, that you observe in Kent County High School? And then I was like, oh, well, I don't know, school morale is low, yada, yada, yada. And you said, okay, let's, let's try to think of how to solve them like right now. And that really stuck out to me. And ever since you've become our superintendent, you've just been like so proactive. And this whole communication plan is something that's really amazing and I'm really excited to see where it goes. So I just want to thank you for being such this positive force and ever, like, you were immediately my favorite when I met you from all the interviews. And I'm so glad that you got this job and I'm so glad that I've got to work with you.
Thank you. That's such kind words. Thank you so much.
So I'm feeling, I'm feeling good tonight. The middle school presentation was also really inspiring to me. I'm just thinking about my little brother getting to go there, hopefully. And I'm excited about the communications stuff and yeah, just feeling good all around. Yeah, I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you for, I'm also really tired, so I'm sorry for.
No, it's all good.
Mr. Queen?
First, a little bit of piggyback on what Alden brought up. We finally found in the Board of Ed Handbook that we're supposed to end at ten P M. But is there anything about starting maybe at five like we did today? Cause just looking at how much information and how much we've done today and then you glance at your clock, I'm like, it's nine o'clock. And we eat this as the normal.
I don't know the answer to that, but I think part of what the five thirty is, most people have jobs. I mean, board members have jobs and a typical workday is nine to five. And if they've got to drive somewhere and for you, for example, your job sometimes takes you on the other side of the bridge. Ms. McKenzie's job isn't here. I, I don't know what the, what the, what the genesis of the five thirty P M start was.
Cause it's just thirty minutes. Cause I'm looking, so let's say it's nine o'clock, we'd be at nine thirty because we had an extra thirty. But I'm just looking like today was smooth as far as time. The slides weren't super long, but that's my question for you, for us to find out. If maybe discussing maybe the five P M start time is something we would like to do. Overall, with me, I would say since joining the board, I was able to do my first budget review. And then within the last week, my first superintendent evaluation. So for me, I felt like the honeymoon period kind of been over after the budget, but at least for me, it was over then. We, I'm, I'm, we here now.
That's a rough one.
But I think I'm, I'm starting to understand what to expect from myself as elected official, my fellow board member colleagues, and then even what to expect from our superintendent. So I will say, kind of almost to piggyback on what you said about Dr. McComas, I do like what I think the leadership from you will look like in the next two to three years moving forward. I think we're in a very good space. We have acknowledged, I think, some of the changes and we're getting better at acknowledging where the changes need to be. So overall, I'm starting to enjoy this a little more, because I'm not going to lie, I didn't enjoy the budget. None of that, but I'm starting to come into a zone where I'm like, I don't hate it, it's okay. So that's all I have for today. I do like the early, early ending though, yes.
I'll explore that. Ms. McKenzie?
Sure. So mine, mine's a little bit more formal, but I, to my, you know, fellow board members here tonight, as we consider how to further advocate for our students' needs, especially with respect to the ongoing conversations with our county commissioners about those aspects of the blueprint that are and are not directly serving our students' best interests, I believe the following information can be helpful. Back in July, I was appointed as Mabe's Representative to the Maryland Consortium on Coordinated Community Supports. And as a reminder, the consortium is a twenty-five member entity responsible for developing a statewide framework to expand access to comprehensive behavioral health services for Maryland students. On August twentieth, I attended an event at Midshore Behavioral Health wherein they gave an overview of the consortium grants in the mid-shore region and that was a wonderful presentation. I learned that during the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, over seven hundred students in Kent County Public Schools benefited from the services provided through the consortium grants and that they are projected to serve over fourteen hundred students during our current school year. Our four consortium grants.
Fourteen hundred students?
That, that's what they projected.
Population of less than seventeen hundred? That's amazing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do have a copy.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, wow, that's.
I know, when I saw that number, it's just clearly it's something our students need and can benefit from. So while I continue to support overall the blueprint being scaled back so that it's affordable and not burdensome, my hope is that the scaling back will be done thoughtfully. And it's vital that those aspects of the blueprint that directly meet students' needs, especially behavioral health services, not be part of that scaling back process. It's important for us as a board to inform our county commissioners on what is benefiting not only our students, but in term our community in terms of comprehensive behavioral health services. Information such as this needs to be regularly communicated with our commissioners so that an all or nothing approach is prevented as they advocate for the best interest of the county as a whole. So there are those who want to see the blueprint stopped in its entirety without any consideration for how students are being helped. It is possible for the blueprint to be modified so that it's both affordable and beneficial. And this is what we need to promote because, you know, nobody wants to see the county go broke over it. At the same time, we want to make sure students are helped and we want to make sure that, that those funds are, are stayed where they're benefiting students most, because that's the priority. So this very much hits close to home for me personally. As a child, my mother struggled with mental illness and as a parent, my children have struggled with anxiety and depression to varying degrees. And so I know firsthand how services like these can make all the difference and whether a child makes it or not. You know, so however we move forward in our conversations with the commissioners and promoting the continuation of needed services, I would very much like to be a part of that conversation because I know a lot of times, again, it's this all or nothing thing that's put out there and, and I think it's important for us to say, here's what's really helpful. So as, however they communicate, the county's best interested to say, please be mindful that almost the majority of our students are projected to need these services. And so this is not where we want to cut. And so this, and this is, this is all the ways that our students are being benefited from through these grants. And, and just because it does hit me very much at a personal level, at a professional level, I mean, I mean, I, I'm not connected to any of these grants. I'm only on this consortium and so it, but just as someone who is well aware of children adolescents in our community that do need support. You know, it's something that we need to do our best to try to advocate for. So I really hope that, you know, you know, if you choose to bring that presentation, just very much would like to be included in that conversation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else? I'll try to be brief. So Dr. McComas, I know it's only been parts of two weeks so far, but how's the three-year-old program going at the Presbyterian Church?
Our students start on the fifteenth.
Oh, they haven't started yet?
No, because you know how like we had to get the permits and stuff like that, so the fifteenth.
Do we have twenty?
We do have twenty.
Did we have a waiting list?
Uh, we do have a waiting list.
Okay, gotcha.
And I will say, we're all very eager for our three-year-olds. So as soon as I can perhaps get some photos and things like that, we can, we can share, share their little people with their bags walking into this big, big kids' school or their big kids' school. And I will say, I know our principals and the other elementary schools are eager, right? They are eager to be able to apply for the grant for next year. So, you know, hopefully at least this time next year, we will be opening at least one more three-year-old program, if not two more. There's a lot of work.
Well, to find a partner like, I mean, let's face it, the partner found us. We wouldn't be doing this without the Presbyterian Church.
It was a mutual, so, but you're right. I mean, there's a, there's a long road between here and there, but I remain hopeful. Just like with enrollment. So, yeah, so on the fifteenth.
Gotcha, okay. So I've got a question. So the State Board of Ed's requesting but not requiring local school districts to develop a comprehensive cell phone policy for twenty-five, twenty-six. You know, there's a, based on recommendations from a state task force, so I'm just wondering where, you know, where we are in that. I mean, I do know that the middle school has something and the high school has something. I don't know that they're the same something and I think it would be beneficial if it was the same something. So it's not an adjustment from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. I just sort of wondered how we're going to go about.
Yeah, I have, I have already asked Mr. What is Vance's last name? It's escaping me. Hamlin, thank you. Mr. Hamlin, who's our safety coordinator, to pull together a work group to formulate a policy. They did, they are researching what official policy is from other school systems. They did send me a draft of something today that I have not opened. But, so we are in the process and our goal is to bring forward a policy to the board in the next month or two. I want to make sure our principals are of course part of that work group. And we did additionally research the Yoder pouches, which is what a lot of the Eastern Shore middle schools piloted in the last eighteen months and all of them rave about. That perhaps there's a grant through Mabe that we might be able to pursue because it would fall under like safety. We're researching that to see if we can use that to, you can actually purchase those pouches as the lease system. But to try to explore, you know, a funding stream through that grant through Mabe to help move us in that direction. I happen to have an Esmeck meeting with this Thursday and I was going to ask the other Eastern Shore superintendents, what are they doing with the Yoder pouch? Yoder, Yoda, Yoder? I'm getting tired. I can't articulate pouches at the high school level because they all just piloted them at the middle schools last year.
So I know I've gotten a letter, at least from one teacher, for my daughter's class that said that those pouches are going to be utilized. So I don't know if that's everywhere, but I know at least I, I received a letter personally.
From one of the high school?
Yeah, that they're doing that.
And I don't think it's, I won't go too in detail, but today I had to call the school about a cell phone issue. And there's no continuity in the rule. I'm mixed as a parent because I feel like as a parent, and then I'll go as a like educator. As a parent, if I pay that phone bill, can't nobody in this school district tell my child what to do? Especially when my kids are on behavior problems and get straight A's. That's just personally how I feel. I get it as an educator, why you might need that, but I'll just say this as a parent. It's not equity across the board on how it's being viewed and my daughter doesn't have a phone and was being accused of having a phone.
I have, I've been.
So it's, it's issues where I see a lot of gray area, because I know a lot of parents staying like me, like, man, that's, nobody tell you take your phone out. No one tell you where to put it. Some, like my kids will put it in the pouch, but like, I'm not one of those people for a phone rule. Cause I just came from a high school in Anaroma County. It does not work. It's, it's altered, maybe in the middle school, but at the high school level, you're inviting problems. That's just my take on it, but.
Yeah, I will just say that, you know, in thirty years of public admin, school service and twenty-two of those thirty in administration, that there is no singular issue comparable to cell phones. And it's exactly what you were just saying, Mr. Queen. Parents pay significant dollar amounts for that phone, but that phone is a connection to parents. And, and I, I once had a conversation with a union leader and, and another school system I served in. And he wanted to make the comparison to his nineteen eighty-six Yellow Walkman, right? And I said, no, you need to understand that when that Yellow Walkman was confiscated at, you know, Randallstown High School and locked in the state school vault for the year, your parent did not suffer. You suffered, but you, your parent did not suffer. Cell phones are a very different issue. I know I've had parents lunge across the reception counter at me physically over cell phones. So it is a particularly unique issue in public education. I will say I've seen nothing but a deterioration in student behavior related to cell phones and social media through cell phones. So it is not a productive element in the educational setting. I will say, I do however, believe that as students mature, and this is where, you know, to me, we have to teach our young people to be ready for the adult world. They have to learn time and place, right? We've all have our cell phones here. We all have them face down, so they're not a distraction, right? But teaching them time and place, I think, is part of our work and education. So I just offer those as some lived experiences and, and yet at the same time, I, I do know we have teachers who do use it as a tool, right? With Q R codes and different things like that. So it's a complex issue.
Yeah, I wasn't, I was just mentioning it.
Oh, well, we have, we have a group. We're working on it. We plan on bringing it forward to you as well. Thank you.
Alrighty, so the board will meet in a retreat on Saturday, September twenty-seventh from nine A M until twelve noon here, I think in the Fishbowl. And it's open, so the public can come, but it will not be livestreamed. The next monthly board meeting will be held on Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning right now at five thirty, but I will. With the open session, open session will immediately follow, be followed by board members going into closed session. The open session will resume at six thirty P M. These meetings will be located at the Administration Building in the Boardroom, five six oh eight Boundary Avenue, Rock Hall. Now, don't all fight over this, but I need an adjourn, a motion to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. McKenzie had the motion and let me guess who's going to second. Okay, Mr. Queen, is there any conversation? Alrighty, I call for the vote, all in favor of adjourning at nine twenty-one, which will be a new world record this year. Okay, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
Ms. Watson?
Aye.
We are.